Good evening, I call to order the Wednesday, November 11, 2020, meeting of the Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission. May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Van Buren is here, Commissioner Sharp.
Here.
Commissioner Thomas.
Here.
Commissioner Scales. Commissioner Lavoy.
Here.
Commissioner Clemmons.
Here.
And Chairman Carmichael.
Here.
We have a quorum. A quorum will continue. Everyone stand and join me in my pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, tonight there will be no need for swearing in anyone who wants to testify, nor will we review the public hearing procedures because tonight is a discussion-only agenda. And I want to confirm with Nalini, did we have anyone who called in or emailed in who wanted to say or ask anything under the open forum?
No, I didn't receive a call.
Okay, first item, the approval of minutes from the September 9, 2020, regular meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion approved, Clemmons.
We have motion and second. Questions, discussion on the motion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Scales? Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Clemmons?
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael.
Yes. All right, under new business, we have a discussion item. At staff request, the commission tonight is to discuss the following suggested text amendments to Appendix A, the zoning code, for the following. One, new ordinance language for allowing ATMs as of right. Two, new ordinance language for eliminating parking requirements for existing buildings and establishing parking requirements for new buildings in the B1 zoning district. Three, new ordinance language for removing off-street parking requirements for existing multi-tenant commercial properties. Four, creating and amending use definitions. And five, creating and amending use tables. And to lead the discussion and kick things off, we'll have Ms. Johnson, the village planner, start on the discussing of automated teller machines as of right.
Sure, we have an item that will be presented by.
Oh, okay.
Hello, everyone.
Mr. Sylvester.
Good to see you all. It's been a month or two. It's nice to try to get back to semi-normal, at least, our monthly meeting. There's a couple items on the agenda. As Chairperson Carmichael just read, staff is proposing, or suggesting, I guess is a better word, some changes to the zoning ordinance and the rules here in the village. As is explained in the staff report that serves as the cover letter to the draft amendments, we deal with the zoning code all day, every day. People are constantly calling us and asking, can I do this? Can I do that? We read the code, we interpret the code, we administer the code. And in the course of doing that work, all day, every day, we discover items that are missing, provisions that may be in conflict with other provisions, things that are vague, things that are unclear, or sometimes just things that, in our professional opinion, we think maybe should be changed, or improved, or modified, or eliminated. And from time to time, as we find those things, we'll bring them to your attention, explain why we think maybe a change is needed, get your feedback. And if you're supportive, or after you've suggested some tweaks and modifications to what we initially bring to you as our suggestions, then we put it into the final form of an official text amendment, and we have a public hearing. So tonight, I mean, as staff, we've put together our thoughts. We want to discuss them with you here. After you provide feedback, we'll finalize it. And then, hopefully, in December, any of these that you guys are comfortable moving forward, whether that's zero, one, two, three, four, five of them, we'll have a public hearing in December. So that's just a little bit of background to put this whole discussion in context. Before I dive into the details of the specific items we're recommending, anybody have questions or comments just on the procedure? Let me just jump in, then. There are a couple. I'm going to talk about three of them, and they're listed in order. The first one is the one I'm hoping we can spend the least amount of time on. And it's simply a recommendation or a suggestion from us, staff, that rather than making an ATM obtain a special use permit before it's allowed to be placed in the community, we simply change that to making them permitted uses. And there's currently two footnotes in the zoning ordinance. One says, if there are any traffic considerations, they need to be addressed. And we're recommending that, I think, that be kept?
No, that only applies for special uses.
Oh, so we would eliminate that?
Yeah, correct.
All right. So currently, the special use requirement, thanks for that clarification, says that in order to receive the special use, there can be no traffic impacts. And then there's a lengthy bit of verbiage about there being no safety concerns for, you know, people attempting to rob them. By saying they're no longer special uses, we would basically say they're permitted, and we would eliminate the need to prove that they won't create traffic concerns. And that would be particularly important in instances for a standalone ATM, like you'll sometimes see in parking lots of shopping centers. And we would eliminate the requirement that they basically prove that they won't create, to the satisfaction of the chief of police, any safety concerns. The request that prompted this proposal is, if any of you have noticed, down at the new strip center at Market Center that's anchored by Starbucks, there is an ATM that is basically in the lobby of one of those storefronts, and that's the only thing in there. There's no tellers, there's no humans, there's really not a bank. It's just a small lobby area, kind of like if you're in downtown Chicago a lot, you'll see them in larger downtown areas. And the thinking among staff is, just make it permitted, rather than having something like that go through the special use permit process, which, as you all know, requires notices to adjoining property owners, public hearing, legal notice in the newspaper, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Full disclosure, for the one down at the strip center, I thought that just having the chief of police sign a letter stating that there were no safety concerns satisfied the requirement, so I permitted that one to go in. So this is a little bit of covering my behind, because I should have made that particular ATM go through the process to get a special use permit, which is part of what prompted this proposal or this suggestion tonight. So are there any questions about that specific suggestion?
I was wondering about the bank that has the ATM there. There's not going to be anything except that there, possibly. Who knows if they change or whatever. Are they closing the other facility?
I have not heard any talk about closing the other facility.
Okay, right.
Is it in the lobby where they have Bank of America on the front?
Yes.
And that is the extent of that bank, and whether it ever will be?
Correct, for the time being. If they wanted to come back and turn it into a bank lobby, I don't know what the zoning rules are about allowing a bank lobby, but just an ATM is what it is for now and will be for the foreseeable future.
I'm in agreement with your suggestion.
So the police chief still has to sign off on every use, even if we take away special use, they're still going to review it for safety?
So currently, an ATM is only allowed if it gets a special use permit. And there's a footnote that says, as part of that process, the chief of police has to review it and sign off that there are no safety concerns. And what we're suggesting is that we make it a permitted use, and that requirement for the chief of police to get involved at all disappears.
By way of background, the special use requirement was enacted almost 20 years ago when ATMs were on the rise, and still a little bit new in the community, and concerns would there be corresponding crime risks, or littering, or whatever. Now they've become pretty ubiquitous throughout the community and throughout the nation without any adverse impact, so it seems natural not to go through the rigmarole of showing, you know, yes, these are secure, and I think the chief of police involved. However, if we think that's important, it could be a permitted use with a footnote that says essentially it's permitted upon sign off by the chief of police and following criteria and that.
Yeah. No, that helps with context, because, I mean, I don't know how often ATMs are a problem for crime. I've never heard of one being a problem in my own personal life, so if the police are also comfortable with it, then I think it's all the better to remove the requirement.
So are you saying, if in general, just overall, the police don't have concerns, you would be okay making them permitted uses without needing a special sign off? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Correct, correct, yeah.
I think that's true?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm all for deregulation, if it makes sense, and it makes sense.
Okay. Well, is that enough on that one? I think this is the most straightforward. And just to be clear, this would be in three zoning districts. So the B1, which is our downtown, B2, which is Ogden and 63rd primarily, and then the C1 district as well, which is also a large portion of 63rd. So that's where this would take effect. Thanks for that feedback. We'll move that one forward and get it ready for a public hearing at the December meeting. Onto the second item that we would like to discuss with you tonight. And this is a more meatier, this is going to be a longer discussion. The village board has committee meetings, which are basically all of the village trustees, but they're meeting as a committee. And they have a committee for public works, a committee for public safety, a committee for admin, and then there's a committee for community development. And that committee meets quarterly, basically. At the last meeting, which was just a couple of weeks ago, we had a discussion similar to this with the trustees about what kinds of regulations and requirements do they want to have for businesses in the downtown. And we, as staff, brought two items to their attention specifically. Many businesses in the downtown, as Commissioner Clemmons knows very well from her recent experience, require a special use permit. And those businesses tend to be non-sales tax generating businesses, like offices and hair salons and businesses similar to that. Also, many times, a new business that wants to come into our community, or even relocate within our community, don't meet all the parking requirements, and they have to go through the process to get a parking variance, even if the use is permitted. So they might not need a special use permit, like a non-sales tax business like an office, but they'll need a parking variance. And sometimes, a business needs both. So what that means is, very often, a business needs one, or the other, or both, and the process is pretty much the same. Notices to surrounding property owners, notice in the newspaper, public hearing in front of you guys, goes to the village board. That all takes time. And the question we ask the village board is, do you want to rethink those requirements and maybe eliminate one or both of them in an attempt to basically make it a little easier and a little faster for businesses to move into our downtown? So, long story short, the trustees said, for special uses, even though I pushed a little, they want to leave the rules the way they are. They're very comfortable saying that non-sales tax businesses in our downtown should get a little more scrutiny, even if that means they take a little more time to get all the approvals they need, because they don't want to open the doors and just have lots of non-sales tax businesses easily and quickly move into the downtown. Hair salons and offices and businesses like that. So that's not changing, and we're not bringing up any suggestions for changing the special use requirements in the B1 district for you guys to discuss tonight. However, in the same discussion, it was very clear among the elected officials that they do think that the parking requirements in the downtown are more than they should be. And they sort of tacitly acknowledged that it's a built environment, the buildings that are there have been there for decades. We want new businesses to come in, and maybe we just need to say less parking is required for some of these people that want to move in. So based on that direction and feedback from the trustees a couple of weeks ago, we drafted some suggestions, and they're in your packet. And I hope you've all had a chance to review them. And I'm just going to quickly go over them, and then we can kick this around. Again, these are just suggestions. We're comfortable with these ideas, and if you adopt them or say that we should move forward with exactly how it's drafted here, great. But they're also just for discussion, so if you think they're too lenient or too restrictive, we can revise it accordingly. But let's go through it first. So this is attachment two. And there's currently a section called exemptions. And we're suggesting deleting quite a bit of the existing language about the B1 district. And this is only for the B1 district, which is, again, our downtown. And then, starting in the middle of page two, in what's green, are the suggested new rules. And let me just back up. Currently, a business that wants to move into the downtown has the same parking requirements as if that same business wanted to move onto Ogden. So if it's a thousand-square-foot store, and they need six stalls on Ogden, where we would expect that to be provided, they're expected to provide six stalls, you know, on the 100 block of North Cass. That's the current situation. What we're suggesting in section A is basically saying, for both permitted and special uses in the B1 district, in existing buildings. And this is a very important point. We've drafted rules for existing buildings, and then different rules for when people propose new buildings, that I'll get to in a moment. For existing buildings, we're suggesting there be no parking required. So any building that's in existence today, or the date that this would be adopted, a business can move in, and whether there are four parking spaces on the property, off-street parking spaces, or 12, or zero, that business could move in. And just to really give you the most extreme example, if you're all familiar with Johnny Blitz's, immediately north of it and adjacent to it is a building. And if you ever look at an aerial photo for Westmont, that building goes from the sidewalk on Cass all the way to the alley, and from the north to the south lot line, that building occupies the entire lot that it sits on, except for about 10 feet in the back, where you could do one of two things. You could park one car, or you could put a small dumpster, but not both. So keep that building in mind when you think about what we've suggested here. Whatever use would go into that building, or any building in the B1 district, would not be required to provide any parking, whether it's an office use, a restaurant use, retail use, whatever. So that's the suggestion for existing buildings. Should we pause there, or do you want me to quickly summarize what we're suggesting for new construction?
I have a question. So the way that I read it was that whatever is currently, whatever parking is currently provided on a lot as of this date, then becomes acceptable. But what about the preservation of those stalls? Can they then use those stalls for other purposes, or actually demolish the asphalt and turn it into greenscape? I mean, is there any protection around the existing parking in the downtown of existing uses?
It's a good question, and it's something we can incorporate into the draft. That idea is not in here now, that we say, whatever you have is enough, but we didn't go to the next step and say, but you can't eliminate it, or, well, basically, you couldn't eliminate it. And if that's something that you guys feel should be a rule, so people don't take out parking, or tear it up to put in grass, or tear it out to put in seating, or a dumpster or something, we could try to incorporate that idea.
Yeah. It's an interesting thought. I mean, it also seems maybe not quite equitable, or like, that building north of Johnny's doesn't have to be limited by that requirement, whereas other buildings are then locked into a certain number of parking stalls. So I don't know. Just a thought.
Other thoughts just on the idea of saying, whatever business wants to move into the downtown, we're not going to sweat the parking and make you go through the process to get a variance if you're two or 20 stalls short?
That's been a real problem for us for a long time, is that a business wants to come in, and we go through this whole thing about parking and money in lieu of, and so on and so forth. All their other things are met. And as we say, this is all there is, this is what we have now. I expect that in the future, with the building of those new projects we have going on here and with the new lot, we're going to be providing more parking, and so that'll relieve a lot of that situation. But we're not very inviting, with this alone, for new business to come in. It's been a real squelcher. Well, I fully agree with this.
My comment is, a business owner downtown, I almost had to pay, like, they had $1,000 for the parking, that I'd have to do, even though I was only using two spots for myself and then an assistant, and then my clients, one at a time. And it's interesting, because I found out that, like, other businesses are parking there. So, and I watched people come and go in funerals and stuff like that. And, you know, for me, it was a shock that I was going to have to pay $1,000, but I said, all right, if I have to. But I was fortunate that another business paid it, the one prior, so I was exempt. But I think that would have deterred many businesses, that, you know, that's one more thing, and it would have taken more time. You had to, you know, do the notice and all that stuff. So I'd be in favor of eliminating for that reason.
One other quick comment. Part of the reason staff is comfortable suggesting that for existing buildings, again, just for existing buildings, that we eliminate any parking requirements, is that the village has some municipal lots and intends to create other municipal lots, and not just the one that we've discussed on North Lincoln, but as other properties become available, it's the plan to have other surface lots around the downtown. So that is a big reason why we're comfortable saying it might be okay to eliminate the requirement for these private properties to provide the off-street parking on their property, or jump through the hoops to get a variance.
I agree with that. It simplifies things. It makes sense to me.
All right. Any other comments on that idea, or that component of what we're suggesting, before I move into new construction?
I have a couple comments. I mean, the new construction part, it's problematic when you try to segregate, you know, not requiring it for one, it's existing, and requiring it for new. I mean, when you look at new development, especially in the downtown area, if you require it, then you're looking really either at a podium-type development, or you're looking at an underground parking garage. That really is not very attractive from a cost standpoint to bring people into the village to do business.
And you're talking about new construction?
New construction, yeah.
Before, and that's a great comment, before we get into that, can I outline what we're suggesting as a starting point?
But as it dovetails into the existing, I really think that, you know, we are right to deregulate it, and really, I mean, we have other parking available, and you stimulate downtown growth and business use on both ends, of both new and existing buildings. I mean, what happens if a building burns down, and we want to reconstruct it? Now, you know, we don't have the parking for it. I just don't want to see it for one and not the other, kind of thing. It makes sense to just deregulate it, in my mind.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, after we go through what we're suggesting be requirements for new construction, you're saying maybe even for new construction, we should have no parking requirements?
And I also think that we somehow, I don't know how, but somehow, we have to protect downtown businesses, too, from a new business dominating the parking downtown. Something new could come into an existing building and have a really high requirement for parking all the time, and impact other businesses. So that's a reason to regulate it.
Right.
But that's a real fine line, I think, you know, where we could have, and I'm not saying that we would, I'm just saying, for example, if you had like an Amazon distribution center downtown, there's people coming and going all day long.
Right.
That really puts an impact on other business uses, because people don't want to stop now, because there's no parking.
But your starting point is, if we do it for one, existing buildings, maybe we should have identical requirements for new. Personally and professionally, I'm not quite ready to go there, but it's an interesting idea, and we can talk about that some more. As you'll see in what I'm about to review.
Okay.
We're suggesting that we do treat them differently, and that we do eliminate requirements for existing buildings, some of which have been here for 100 years.
Yeah.
But we do impose requirements for new. So why don't I go through those quickly, and then we can kick that around? All right. We do get into some technical things here, and then we just step back. Parking requirements are part of the zoning ordinance. It's totally local control. There's no federal mandates, there's no state mandates, there's no county mandates. It's like sign regulations. It's whatever each community wants. So there's no right answer. Some communities impose huge requirements. They'll say that for a particular kind of use, they need one stall for every 100 square feet. Another community, even in the same area, you know, western suburbs, for that exact same kind of use, might say they only want one parking stall for every 500 square feet. So a 1,000-square-foot business in one community would need 10 stalls, and in the other community would only need two. So why do I say that? It's really what this community wants for yourselves. Do you want to be a community that has very high parking requirements, and says, hey, if you want to be here, you got to provide a lot of parking? Or do you want to say, in our downtown, that's hard to do, it's expensive, it might be a disincentive for new businesses to come in, we'll reduce those requirements in the hope that we'll get some more development, and if there's a slight parking problem, that's okay? So that's really the discussion here, as I go through some of these numbers, if you just want to keep that in mind. So, starting on the bottom of page two, what we're suggesting is that any new building that's built after whatever date this is adopted, and what we're suggesting is that it provide for commercial uses, one space for every 200 square feet within that building. And not get into all sorts of nuance by saying excluding kitchen area, or that amount plus this many per every seat, or hallways are counted, but bathrooms are not. I mean, it's just a very clean, very simple gross square foot, one per 200. Now, that number 200 comes from the current zoning ordinance for Westmont, has different parking requirements for different kinds of commercial uses. Some are called high intensity, a lot of traffic in and out. That would be, you know, pharmacies and businesses like that. Moderate-intensity commercial uses, and I should have brought my book, but I didn't, where there's a little less traffic demand in and out, and then low intensity, where there's just not a lot of vehicles coming and going. The one per 200 figure is the current requirement for high-intensity commercial uses. But it's not the highest requirement in our ordinance. For things like medical clinics and restaurants, we require even more than one per 200. We basically require one per 100. So again, the easiest number for me to use is any business with a 1,000-square-feet. If it's one per 200, they got to have five stalls. If it's one per 100, they got to have 10 stalls. So what we're suggesting as a starting point for this discussion is, any new commercial building in the downtown would have to have one per 200. For residential, it's the same thing. There's no right answer. Some communities require two stalls per dwelling unit, period. Other communities say one stall per unit. A very small handful, especially in bigger, denser cities, say zero. You don't have to provide any parking. And then finally, some communities are a little more nuanced, and they'll say it's going to be based on bedrooms. A three-bedroom unit has to have two stalls. A one-bedroom unit has to have one and a half stalls per unit, and a studio can have one stall. What we're suggesting, again, just to get this discussion started, is any new again, just to get this discussion started, is any new residential building in the downtown would have to have 1.25 parking stalls per dwelling unit and leave it at that. And for reference, if you've had a chance, at the back of the staff report or at the back of the attachment, is a list of what some of our neighbors do. And it's all over the place. Some require two per unit, period. Others, it's as low as one per unit. Also, for reference, you know, I forgot to put page numbers on here, so I apologize. But if you flip towards one of the last pages at the top, it says Quincy Station, if people see that. So that project was approved just over two years ago. And that project had 106 residential parking spaces for 94 dwelling units. And that calculates out to 1.18 parking stalls per dwelling unit. And what we're suggesting is we would require slightly more than that.
Wasn't that the one where they were going to provide rentals on premises?
Yeah, you know, that was right before I was hired. I think there was some aspect of...
Yeah, there will be a rental on premises. So it was more catering toward what we see in the future on cars and usage.
Right. And then my last comment about what we're suggesting for residential parking requirements is, and again, all of this is modifiable. I mean, this is just to get your thinking going. Not basing it on dwelling, on bedroom unit type. Although that is a little more nuanced, a little more sophisticated, we could very easily say three bedrooms need this amount, two-bedroom units need a slightly lower amount, one-bedroom and studios need even less per unit. So that's what we're suggesting for new residential. So if someone wants to build an apartment building or more likely a mixed-use building like Quincy Station and like One North Cass, that would be the requirement for residential. Why don't I really quick jump into commercial and then we can talk about all of it? Oh, I already did commercial, one per 200. Oh, so then a final thought. What we're suggesting is that those be stacked on top of each other. So in a mixed-use proposal, if someone had 50 dwelling units and 1,000 square feet of commercial, we would calculate how much is needed for each of those, add them together and say they have to provide all of it, rather than saying, well, you can share and this and that and the other. Some communities say you can share. They'll say, well, in theory, in the day, people leave to go to work and that's when the businesses need and can use those shared parking spaces. That's common and we could certainly do that here. But just to get the discussion going, we're suggesting no. If there's 1,000 square feet of commercial at 200 per, they need to provide five parking spaces on top of whatever they need for residential. So thoughts?
That is going to increase the costs to a developer, is it not? And so if he's looking at two communities and one has a laxer requirement, he looks at building the same building costing him less or her. So that's one.
This is, this is reducing the requirements from what the village currently has. So, yeah.
Okay.
More developer-friendly as far as the downtown parking requirements for new development.
Good point. Thank you.
And if the businesses are working at home and the people are not going, leaving their parking spaces, you have, I think you have to do each separate.
Add them.
Yeah, add them together, right. Both be provided.
One of the incentives for the development of a rental is that you have provided a signed parking spot. And as soon as you start mixing them, that kind of disappears. Also, for the most part, any developer with playing out that kind of money is very cognizant of his needs. And to go beyond what those needs are makes it difficult for us to get a developer to come in and it's also, it's not good.
And so let me take that idea, you know, to the next step. I mean, you could, I don't know what the right word is. You could even be a little more extreme and just say, we will rely on what developers propose because developers know the market and developers don't want to build more than they think the market is going to demand and just make it completely market-based. I'm not a fan of that because I think...
I'm not either because some are spec builders.
Right.
And they're going to run away as soon as they get, you know, the building's built. And so that, that kind of a developer is different from one who is, are going to be living with his investment.
So if, so I would not be a fan of, for example, and if I heard you correctly, some people might argue, let's just get rid of all requirements and let the market decide and the developers know what they need. But I would caution against doing that because a developer will come in and build 80 units in our downtown with zero parking and say, well, you know, the market doesn't need it. Everyone does car sharing and car rentals and Ubers and bikes and Metro and there's really no need for parking anymore. And then we find out that everyone that moves into that building has a car or two and they're all parking on the street. So I think we should impose some requirements.
Yeah.
It's just how much?
I think Bruce Wall, my development work around the suburbs, the 1.2 is, 1.25 is pretty common. I see a lot of municipalities that, you know, for them, it's a stretch to do that, but that's for real. That's really what it is. The other comments I'll make on this may be related, may be unrelated, but maybe stimulated something in your mind and Delaney's mind is what's happening now dovetails into what Wallace was saying, is if we have a development come in and spots in that development area are dedicated to particular tenants, what I'm seeing is I could pick up my phone and go to Spot Hero and I could rent that space, you know, at a small fee rather than have that space vacant during the day. And I think of that versus what we had up at the grocery store on the corner where they built a parking lot and they didn't have any problem with us as a community sharing that lot. And I thought that was an awesome thing for them to do. But when we have like a high residential area here and we have spaces that are being rented internally and we can't control it, all of a sudden cars are parked in our downtown area because of the overburden. If somebody wants to come to the train and instead of paying in the municipal lot, they're paying for a private space in another private development. So just to, I don't know what to do about that, but I know that's pretty common. And it's, it's a problem elsewhere where people have their space and they can rent it and nobody knows about it and that space is occupied all day long.
Right. I'm sorry, what's the problem with that?
The problem with that is, is that, you know, if you have parking that's shared or you're impacting other, other businesses downtown by having spaces that are normally vacant occupied, even if it's within a private development. You know, if there's a parking lot that's built for a development, well, like the one on One North Cass, if we have that parking lot, it's dedicated to that development.
Right.
People are then going to rent those spaces themselves opposed to having it as a community crossover shared parking agreement. So anyway, it's unrelated to that, but I think that 1.25 is a good number and I think that it should be on both sides of the fence.
So what would be most helpful, I think, for us is if we got real clear direction, I guess, on the three points. And I guess you've introduced a fourth question. So they are, is 1.25 per residential unit acceptable? Is one per 200 for commercial acceptable? Is requiring that in a mixed-use building, those two numbers be added together rather than overlapping or sharing them acceptable?
I think so. I'm going to agree with all of that.
And I'm seeing a lot of heads nodding. And then the big one that I didn't think about, and it's really sort of a really big question, is should the requirements that we impose on new construction be the same as what we impose on existing buildings? And I'm hearing Commissioner Lavoy say yes. I'm going to respectfully say I think it's okay to have different requirements. But that sounds like something we should come to some agreement on.
Well, I can tell you that developers don't come or not come to a development or to a community based on the parking. The issues are really the building code requirements and what is the building going to cost me to build per code requirements in that pit ticket of municipality? Do I need to do sprinklers? Do I need to do fire code lumber? There's building, different building requirements in different towns. And that's really the hinge pin for people coming or not coming, not necessarily the parking ratio.
I couldn't agree more, but unfortunately, we and you only have jurisdiction over the zoning.
Correct.
We don't write those and adopt those.
I'm just saying, that's a fact. I mean, they're not making decisions on the parking ratio. So...
Yeah, I think 1.25 is a great number for residential. I saw somewhere in your, in the packet that the Urban Land Institute, their number is 250 for commercial uses.
Well, be careful because that was probably a reference in the third item we're going to discuss next, which is multi-tenant commercials.
Multi-tenant, sorry.
And that study from the Urban Land Institute was referenced for strip centers, not what we're talking about here in the downtown. I mean, they may, it may apply, but I don't want to assume that it applies.
Yeah.
I like the zero for current and then the 2.5 for new.
So just to be clear, zero for existing buildings, whatever businesses want to come in. And if someone wants to propose a new building, you are comfortable with what for residential?
1.25. Yeah, 1.25, yeah.
1.25 per unit, regardless of whether it's a studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom. And then for commercial, are you comfortable with what we've thrown out here?
Mm-hmm.
One per 200.
Right.
And then stacking those. Both would be required. I mean, that's what we're suggesting. But again, you can make it more. You can make it so we demand more parking or less.
And Bruce, the one for 200, one parking space for 200 square feet for commercial, you said that equates to high-volume commercial uses currently in the code?
Correct.
And in the downtown, there might be a mixture. Would you consider softening that to one per 300 or one per 400 so they have to provide a little less parking? It's a little more business-friendly and we don't know if, you know, they might have an insurance business in there that really doesn't generate a lot of traffic. They may have a restaurant, but in the end, it'd balance out if you skew more towards the middle rather than high-volume. Just a thought.
I mean, just to state the obvious, and I think this is included in the staff report, the thing we're grappling with here is you build a building and you only build it once. But then it's there for 100 years and the uses cycle in and out. So in one decade, it might be a low-volume, low-parking, parking demand generating use. And 30 years later, there might be some business we don't even know about now that has intense parking demand. So when you sort of pick a requirement that is constructed when they're building the building, then you're stuck with it. And what we're struggling with here is do we want to err on the side of requiring a little too little? Or do we want to err on the side of requiring a little too much?
I know with me for the zero and then the 1.25, I agree with that. The, my struggle is with the one per 200. And I know like in the case of, alright, where my business is prior, it was Scallywags, which was more of a high-volume, you know, they have events and stuff like that. Whereas with like with me, I mean, we only have a few people. I mean, we just have big office space for what we need to do. And so that's why I just, the one per 200 I struggle with.
Mm-hmm.
I think that's, I guess, a little tight.
I think that might be a little bit.
I don't know if we can do it based on what the, you know, business is, but like you said, it evolves over time. So that's, it could be too restrictive.
Well, a lot, it looks, it looks like a lot of these other cities and this graph or chart that you guys provided is really helpful, but it seems that a lot of the commercial downtown districts don't require any parking. Like Claret and Hills is half the parking required elsewhere. Downers Grove is no parking for commercial uses except medical, dental and PDs. So I actually kind of agree that 200 could be softened up more still for the downtown. I would rather err on the side of a little, a little less parking.
And maybe to support that idea, again, I'm going to refer you to the top of the page where I've got the actual numbers for Quincy Station. So if you want to flip to that page. 2018, many of you were on this commission at the time. The village approved 10 parking spaces for the commercial component of Quincy Station, which even at that time, I believe was known to be a restaurant with 3,740 square feet. So, simple math, that is requiring one stall for every 374 square feet of area, even knowing that it was going to be a restaurant. And that's about half, one per 400 would be half of what we're suggesting, one per 200. So the, what was approved there is almost half as much parking as what we're suggesting would be required if you want to go with one per 200. So one per 300 would require less. And as Attorney Zemanek said, one per 400 would be even less. I mean, you could go as low as one per 1,000. I mean, it's, it's where your comfort zone is, knowing that once it's built, then you're not going to get any more parking on that site.
No, I guess I'm thinking, and maybe this is what Commissioner Lavoy is thinking also, like if we put less, if we put more, I guess, less requirements for parking on developers and then let's say in 20 years, there is more of a parking demand and people feel squeezed, then maybe we actually build consolidated public parking to accommodate that, which is a better end. I think that's a better solution, apples to apples, than having only private garages. Because then you do get the mix of uses that can use the stalls during different times of day. It's more flexible. It's a better solution, but it's a, that's a long-term view.
So I live in Elmhurst and I know Elmhurst has been very aggressive over the last, I'm going to guess, two, maybe three decades, building public parking facilities. And I think they, they have done that so that they now, as you can see in that chart, can just say, no business needs to provide any parking. Just the municipality has provided it.
I'm a new commissioner, so I think I'm a little behind on the public parking thing. Will we hopefully be having a parking garage?
I believe in the short term, the plan is to create surface parking lots. They're a lot cheaper. If this community ever grows to the point that it would pay for itself through whatever bonding and, you know, maybe a tax, what do you call it, special service area in the downtown or whatever, that's what a lot of communities are going towards, including Elmhurst and Naperville.
Downers too.
Or Elmhurst, yeah.
Downers too is down there.
And Downers, yep. And I know Naperville.
LaGrange, they have parking?
I'm less familiar with LaGrange.
Yeah, that's, it's right off of LaGrange Road.
Yeah.
They, I mean, I think they were one of the first. Okay. Because I think that relieve a lot of these problems if we just have a parking garage.
So Commissioner Sharp, what I heard you say is perhaps the new rules should require even less parking for newly constructed commercial space in the downtown. So not one per 200, which is where we started the discussion.
Yeah, I mean, I'm by no means an expert on parking ratios, but my sentiment is less parking than more. Yeah.
Do you want to hazard? Because again, this is just all, there's no science to that. Well, there is some science.
Well, we're already slashing the requirement, so I don't want to slash it too dramatically. So I feel like 300 is a feasible number, but...
So if someone built a, you know, 1,000-square-foot new commercial space in the downtown, because we always round up, they would have to provide four. That building, that newly constructed building in the downtown would have to provide four parking spaces on their private property. If it were just a commercial building of 1,000, you know, 1,100 square feet, pretty much up to 1,200 square feet.
Then they could always come in for variance with they can't do forever.
So, okay, I'm glad you brought that up.
They can provide more. That's just the minimum.
Okay, two good points.
Yeah.
Let me touch on that one quick. All of these are the minimum. A developer can always provide more. There are a very small handful of communities in the country that set... There are a very small handful of communities in the country that set maximums. I'm not suggesting we do that, we're just setting the floor. And you're right, if we say you have to provide at least four, a developer could say, boy, I want my new commercial building to have lots of parking. I'm going to put on eight and, and that would be okay.
And related to that, sometimes there are private-public partnerships where a developer says, hey, I can provide more. And if you guys want to chip in, we can make this public parking or shared parking or something. So, so that's an option to consider as well in the future.
And then to your point about variances, it's the last part of what we have suggested here, is keeping a fee, but simplifying it and substantially increasing it. So once we as a village come to some comfort and agreement about what the new requirements are, people can still say, I don't, you know, I crunched the numbers, the size of my building, the number of units, whatever. You know, the village is saying I got to provide 20 stalls, I'm only going to provide 15, they need a variance. Hopefully those will be less, those will be requested less often since we're reducing the number of required stalls. But there'll still be times, someone will want a variance. What we're suggesting in this draft is if they get a variance, they would have to pay $5,000 per stall. Just a flat substantial number. And that money would be dedicated for, to go into a fund specifically to create a parking ramp or a surface lot in the downtown to serve the B1 district. So if they say, I'm supposed to have 20, I'm only going to provide 15, that's five short times $5,000. They would, they would be required to pay $25,000.
Is that for new or also existing?
This is only for new construction.
Because I don't think it said that there, that's why I was reading it. Because A, we've got two, then A is existing, B is new, C doesn't say that, I don't think.
So C says off-street parking variance provisions. And then it says, in the event a petitioner requests a variance from the required number of off-street stalls as provided above. And above says, no stalls are needed for existing. And then it lists what will be required for new. So really what it's saying is the only time you'd need a variance is for new construction.
Okay, all right, because I'm like, wow, because I was, you know, like for a business that's existing, I'm like, 5,000 per spot?
For, now, if we said it all has to be consistent and if we said existing buildings should have the same requirements as new, then we would need to maybe revisit this item to make sure we're not making a new business that wants to move into an existing building, have to pay $5,000 for every stall they're short. But as drafted, existing businesses would not be required, businesses and existing buildings would not be required to provide any. So there would never be a situation where they'd have to pay any money for variants.
Well, I think that, you know, this commission, we've already set precedence on two downtown developments. And as Attorney Zemanek pointed out, I think that it was like one for every 375 square feet. And then including you did, Bruce, about the restaurant, the one we did on the corner. So we know, for example, let's say hypothetically, a new developer comes in and wants to do the same thing that we did over there. Same parking requirement. And if we did it at, if they came back and asked for a variation, okay, we're going to make the new developer pay the $25,000 and we let them build their development without it. So I think the precedence is really setting precedence here, that I think our ordinance should state what we've already approved.
Well, just to be clear though, the Quincy Station project was approved with a variance. So there were.
Understood.
There were rules and.
Right, but they didn't pay the $5,000 for the, being short.
They didn't pay a fee, but in lieu of, but it was much less.
Uh-huh.
And I understand the sentiment that we would want to treat a developer and a proposal three years from now the same as we treated Quincy Station two, two years ago. But, and John, can correct me if I'm wrong, it's okay. We can change the rules and over time, the rules might become more, I'm going to use the word burdensome or expensive. And, and I believe that's okay. So it might be that, hey, back in 2018, they got a variance and it was cheap. And now someone in 2022 wants to do something similar and they got to pay more, I believe that's okay.
That's what turns developers off. I mean, that's the, when you come to town, I got to pay that kind of money because I need a parking variation. When they've already approved this before, the logic tells, they base their stuff on logic and what it's going to cost me.
Right.
So I really think that our regulations should be consistent with what this commission has already recommended. And that way, we don't have variations, we stimulate development and growth downtown. And we don't have to, you know, have a variation for stuff that we've already approved, based on those, on those standards. So I just think that it should be consistent. Your, your, your square footage, your parking per square foot should be consistent with what we've approved. One to 400 would work for me.
But if you, but if you do it once, you are not, your feet aren't in concrete and you have to stay that way the whole time because you did it once. Times change, situations change. And you, I don't think we should be able to be locked into what we've done in the past because that's what the situation was in the past.
Yeah, unfortunately, that building's not built and it hasn't been occupied for a couple of years, so we could evaluate. And if that thing were up and occupied for a year or three now, we would all say, yeah, parking seems fine. Whatever we approved seems to be okay. Or, oh my God, there's a parking problem there all day, every day. What were we thinking? We can't, you know, we got to make sure that we require more in the future. We don't have that luxury.
Hey, Bruce, is it common for other, these, some of these other villages that we have, that's on this list here? I guess they don't, they're developers, since there's no requirement, they don't pay into any pot that the village then uses to build their parking.
Actually, they do.
Yeah, like an improvement fee.
The one that I found, and I didn't have a ton of time to really dive too deep into it, but Naperville has a very complicated system where they don't require parking, but based on the use and the square footage and the area within their downtown, they have different zones, there's different fees. And the fees are, you know, graduated and, and all that money goes into a downtown parking. I don't know if it's a utility or just a dedicated fund. But there are communities that, that do charge a fee and put that money into a fund to pay for.
Well, I'm just thinking like, you know, normally we expect the developer to have the burden of paying for their parking that they're bringing. So with, with us reducing the parking requirement, that's reducing their cost.
Yes.
But if they can't meet even that, then I think it's fair for them to chip in some money because the village is going to have to pay for those stalls somewhere.
Right, and Hinsdale does require a fee in lieu of, and that was the impetus for requiring a fee in lieu of years ago when it was originally enacted. But the village did it at such a low rate, to try and be fair, that it, the money generated was inconsequential. This becomes a little more consequential, but just on new development. The alternative, if, if the village were to impose an SSA, a special service area in the B1 district, then you're taxing all of the property owners in the B1 over a 20-year period. Probably a small amount, but enough to build up a war chest so you can build public parking. That kind of penalizes existing building owners who don't have a need for the parking so much compared to new development. So this is a way of saying, as Bruce said, build to the village's requirements, which are more relaxed than they used to be. And if you can't, you have to pay into a fund to help pay for what you can't provide.
Yeah.
I have a question. We have, a number of years ago instituted this money in lieu of providing the parking. And I don't think, again, after we pass on that, we don't hear anything about. Have we developed a considerable amount? Or have we been a little bit shy and, or not enforcing that or what's happened?
It's been enforced and I asked the finance director a couple of weeks ago and he said it's, it's pretty inconsequential. I think it's under $20,000 in total. And, I mean, that might build you one parking stall in a surface parking lot or maybe a couple. But it's not enough to be of significance.
And then I would just add to that, in my limited time here, I was involved, and you'll probably all remember this, in one request for a parking variance downtown, and it's when Taco.
Express?
Taco Express wanted to move down a couple of doors, they needed a parking variance. You recommended it, the village board approved it. And because you don't consider financial matters here, you purely do with land regulations, the request to be exempt from the fee in lieu of went directly to the village board. And the business owner requested that, and if I remember correctly, the village board approved that request. So there was just one example where we didn't even collect any fee in lieu of because the village board waived it.
And, and the development never happened?
Well, the business never moved into the space where we approved a variance from parking requirements so that they could move. So we gave them the entitlement they needed, they just never followed through and moved their business. So if I had to try to summarize, in the downtown, existing buildings waive requirements. New construction with residential, I'm hearing, and be bold and jump in there if I'm mischaracterizing this, I'm sensing 1.25 per unit regardless of bedrooms is acceptable. And for commercial, I'm hearing, I heard one per 400, which is half what we started with by stats suggesting one per 200. And I'm just going to give full disclosure here that, I mean, it's your call, your community, it's what you guys are comfortable with. That seems a little light to me, but if that's what you guys want as the representatives for this.
Personally, I would go for at least three. I would incline toward four, but I can see where you, you might get in trouble there.
And I don't want to sway you, again, it's, you know, you're the community representative. So if you want to really reduce that burden, reduce that requirement, go with one per 400 or one per 500.
Well, we are not an economic development commission, you know, we're a zoning commission. But at the same time, you know, I think every one of us wants to encourage business activity and new business in this community. And if, if we go light, if we go to 400, I think over the long term, that's just going to put pressure on the village to sooner rather than later, build a parking ramp, which would benefit the entire B1 district. So, you know, if guys are pushing 400, I wouldn't object to that for that reason.
You would or wouldn't?
I would not object to the, to the looser.
The lower requirement?
Yes.
The one per 400?
Correct.
And I think Commissioner Sharp, you threw out the idea of a lower, perhaps a one per 400 requirement.
Yeah, I'm more of a 300 guy, I think.
300?
Yeah.
This might be one, just because I'm going to have to bring this to the village board. And it's a, you know, it's, it's a touchy subject, it's an important subject. If, hopefully you all could come to some agreement on whether it's 300 or 400, that would help me.
I'm okay going to 400 because I think that these things will change over time. So as we, as the parking situation changes, the regulations can change with them to guide it in the direction it needs to go. So I'm okay putting more pressure now and seeing what happens. Maybe in five years, we have to.
Right.
Increase it again.
You know, we're doing this kind of blindly and it's too bad we don't have our two big developments completed. Then we could see how realistic we're, we're dealing with this. And so with that in mind, I think we should err a little bit on, on being more, more easy on parking. And we, I think in probably five, six years from now, we'll be in a better position to really assess our parking needs. Because we don't know now. So what are you now saying, you, 3 or 400? I'm saying lean three to four, but, you know, to loosen it up.
Well, three or four would be loosening up compared to what is currently the requirement.
Right, right.
We're definitely loosening them up, it's just how much.
I'm 400.
So I got a couple 400s, I hear 300?
I have a four.
Or three.
So four, then four.
Yeah, I think I would say four also.
So, and that's fine. What I'll do when I explain this to the village board is just say there was general agreement across the board to reduce the requirements. But when it got to the question of how much to loosen them, there was some very reasonable disagreement among this group about going, you know, as low as only one per 400 or perhaps maybe only as low as one per 300. And if the board has a preference, if the elected officials have a preference, then they'll decide. Are you guys comfortable with that?
Yeah, yes.
But for the public hearing in December on this item.
Oh, that's right.
I guess we can propose one per 400 because that's what the majority has asked for. See if any public has input and then you guys can make your recommendation to the village board.
Very good.
Good point. So we'll proceed with 400, obviously this will be discussed later. I did also want to mention that in terms of the procedure, so text amendments is, that means we're changing the rules. We have to have a public hearing. Unlike a zoning map amendment or a special use or a variance that are specific to a piece of property, when we change the rules, we're not required to notify any particular people. Now, this is kind of interesting because the rule change we're proposing is for B1 and that's a very, you know, it's just our downtown. So even though it's not required that we notify people, I discussed this with a group of us, Nalini and the village manager and the mayor and I, we each meet Thursday afternoons and talk about all kinds of stuff. And I brought up this issue with them last week and we all agreed that even though it's not required, we should notify the downtown businesses that were contemplating these changes. And I waited until after tonight's meeting to see if there was general comfort among you before sending out that notice. So I'm going to send that out tomorrow, Friday. None of us anticipate any opposition, I mean, we're reducing the requirements. But in terms of the process, I just wanted you to know that we are going to be sending out to two groups. And I know I always get into the details and the weeds, but I want you guys to be clear on all this. There's property owners and that's who we have mailing lists for because we have property owner records. And then there's tenants and we don't have records for tenants. But we're very fortunate that Westmont has a phenomenal chamber of commerce who pretty much has contacts for every business, including businesses that rent or lease their property. So I'm going to work with the Chamber of Commerce, we'll definitely get all the property owners, even if they're in Phoenix or New York or Florida. And then the chamber is going to help us make sure that we also get the tenant businesses that maybe don't, wouldn't get that notice that goes to the property owner. So I'll do that later this week.
And you're still going to publish?
And we have to publish, although I'm a little cynical, I'm not convinced a lot of people read those. But we're required to publish. All right, anything else on the B1? That was very helpful feedback.
Good.
Okay, final, third item that I'll be presenting. While we were looking at the parking requirements for downtown, again, we deal with the zoning ordinance all the time. And we are constantly struggling with parking requirements in strip centers. And if you look, there's actually a surprising number of strip centers. So at the, the last couple of pages of the next attachment, and the business names are included. I'm sure you're familiar with all of these strip centers, there's a lot of them. And every time a business wants to move in, not every time, often, we're in a situation where we're trying to calculate how much parking is needed and what's the square footage of the tenant space and how many seats do they have if it's a restaurant? What are all of the other uses within that strip center? What's all the square footage of all the other uses? How do you discount for the storage areas and the non-kitchen areas and the hallway areas and the warehousing areas? Trying to calculate all that, coming up with a number and then telling that business, oh, you need a variance because that strip mall is already at capacity for parking. It's, it's very labor-intensive for staff, not that that should be the only consideration. But it can also cause delays for businesses. And if we determine that a variance is needed, then it just adds on that extra time and cost of them going through the variance process. So because of all that, what we're suggesting you consider is basically what is basically the same approach that we're using in our downtown for existing buildings. If there's a strip center and it has a parking lot, whatever business wants to go in can just move in. And we're not going to make them jump through the hoops. We don't care if it's a restaurant, we don't care if it's a dry cleaner, we don't care, we don't care. So that's a pretty extreme idea, but that's what we're suggesting. John picked an inopportune time to leave, so I'll make his comment for him in his absence. picked an inopportune time to leave, so I'll make his comment for him in his absence. John supplemented that sort of blanket, black-and-white approach, any business can move in, no questions asked, with a more nuanced approach, and said, well, there are some uses that just by their nature require so much parking, maybe we should carve out and say those particular kinds of businesses do need to be evaluated, and might need to go through the parking variance process. And those would be things like, especially medical, dental, you know, medical-type uses have a ton of parking demands. Schools, if a ballet, or karate, or dance school went in, those can create intense parking demands. And then there was one or two listed as possible carve-outs. So I guess what we're looking for from you for direction is, do you want to just leave things alone, and we'll continue to calculate all the requirements? And a lot of times, businesses will need variances. That's the status quo. Do you want us to go to the other extreme and just say for existing centers, we don't care? Or do you want to do a sort of a middle approach and say, we mostly don't care, but we're going to identify a handful of businesses that, that we might make them get a variance?
How many, how much of a problem, I know you haven't been here that long, but have you had with people saying, I, I'm a part of this shopping center, and this guy over here is taking all the parking, and I don't have any for my people come in? Do you get any of that?
We get a little. Usually what we do for existing businesses in an existing building is say it's really about the management and the property owner, what the leases say. It gets complicated.
Yeah. Because, I mean, you really can't do a heck of a lot to change. There's the parking lot is there, and the businesses are there. You can't expand it, nor can the person who's there.
Right.
And so what it's really saying, you got what you got, live with it.
Right. And again, what I just presented was for existing. After we have this discussion, then the final bit is if someone comes in and proposes a new multi-tenant commercial center. But we'll get to that next. So for existing, what are people's thoughts?
If somebody's coming into an existing, they know what their business is, what their business is going to need, they know what is there already, and they know what it looks like, what, how it's being used. So if, if, if they don't like it, they're not, they know that they can't change it.
Right.
Usually.
So our challenge is always to balance, you know, what makes sense, and what's reasonable for businesses, and to be business-friendly, and that's important. But we also have to always remember that our decisions and our rules will have consequences on the neighbors. It's always about the neighbors. So I always try to do the brain exercise of what's the worst-case scenario. So if we just eliminate all parking requirements for an existing commercial center, and three of the most wildly popular restaurants in the world move in, and COVID has ended, and those places are jamming with people, lines out the door, parking lot full, people parking up and down the adjacent residential neighborhoods, we need to think about that. And if we're concerned about that, or if we think that's a realistic possibility, and we definitely want to prevent that, then maybe we leave the rules the way they are.
My thoughts kind of, I mean, we really, it doesn't appear that we really have a problem on it, and probably be addressed at the time. But I think it's up to the management company, and I know those vary of the quality of the management companies. But I guess leave well enough alone on that. You know, it's, it doesn't seem like there's much of a problem with it.
With, with the way the rules are currently?
Yeah.
And again, the only problem is, it, it's a lot of work for staff to administer, and occasionally that means a business is told, you, you need to get a variance.
I always think they didn't need a variance. Okay, so I guess, I guess it doesn't seem like there's a problem, so therefore why the variance? So my thought is not doing a variance, and leave it to the strip center to work it out, kind of, in a way.
And I just want to make sure I'm hearing you correctly. So you're saying it's okay the way it is, and let's leave the rules the way they are?
No.
Saying?
No.
Or you're saying the rules should be changed so that businesses don't have to worry?
They don't have to have a variance prior to going in, these little small businesses, because it, I think that hurts small businesses from going in, and we, we need them.
And would you say that would be true for most businesses, but the really parking-intensive businesses should maybe be scrutinized and, and required to get a variance, like?
Carve it out. I would say carve out, you know, like the dental, and, you know, medical, and, you know, those in particular.
Good. So loosen up the requirements for most uses, except for a short list of, of the kinds of businesses we all know are, are parking-intensive, medical, schools?
Yes.
Well, they may be parking-intensive, but they may be having no problem.
See, that's what's so tough, because even the restaurant example, we've all known restaurants that are dead, and there's never anyone there, and maybe they got one customer. And then they, they go out of business, and three months later, the most fantastic business that got written up in Chicago Magazine moves in, and there's, you don't have half as much parking as they need. I mean, that's why it's an art. It's not a science. There's no right answer. It's just what, what is our comfort zone for this community?
Do communities ever say, well, let's try this for 36 months, and see if, if we made the wrong decision, or if we need to tighten things up, or if it turned out to be no problem at all, and we'll?
Not that I'm aware of.
I mean, is that kicking the can down the road, or is it a realistic way to, to make the right decision, that, since we don't have a crystal ball?
But we do have, we do have a long history with malls. They've been here for 40, 50 years.
Mm-hmm.
That's, there's your answer right there. How much of a problem have you had with this, this issue? And if there's been minimal problem with it, and, and then there hasn't been a whole lot of deals gone into administration of it either, from your standpoint. But if it's, if it's had been, if it hasn't been a problem, then I'd say don't regulate it. If you have current regulations on them, I'd say loosen them.
So, just so I'm clear, you're saying if, if there hasn't been a problem with overflowing parking lots, and people parking in residential neighborhoods, if I'm hearing you correctly, you're saying maybe we can loosen up the rules?
Yeah, well, we know that. If we have all that, that, that information is available to us, we don't have to guess about the future on that.
And here's where it gets so tough, and I'm going to call your attention to, I'm looking at the third attachment. Nope, it's in here. Where did I put that? Okay. Do you see a page, and it says at the top, discussion item? And there's a table towards the top, says shopping center. So in my time here, and I know Attorney Zemnax has been here a lot longer, and you obviously have been here a lot longer even, I've only heard of one multi-tenant commercial center that I've ever heard any complaints about parking. And it's the one at 19 West Ogden. It's the third one on the list. Ironically, it provides more than one per 200 square feet. And it provides a similar amount to two other commercial strip centers that I've never heard complaints about. So even strip centers that provide similar amounts can have different experiences in terms of whether it's enough or not. But other than 19 West Ogden, and I don't know if Nalini, or John, or any of you are familiar, I've not heard of any other strip commercial centers where parking has been complained about.
No, no. You know, that's, I think that's a good, a good reason to not regulate.
And honestly, I might add to the list. If you go to the third page, it's got in pink at the top, discussion note one. We've got a list of the items that we do know generate a lot of parking demand. I think the reason that 19 West Ogden does get some complaints sometimes about being underparked is because there are two restaurants and a reasonably popular fitness center. And I might add fitness centers to this list of items that we know generate a lot of parking demand, and might need some additional scrutiny, rather than just letting them move in. So if people are comfortable with that?
I have heard that with that one fitness center, Orange Theory, that then they park in Phillips parking lot.
So Bruce, when you guys, when you guys get a new tenant request for a strip mall, and to do that parking analysis, you not only have to figure out their parking requirement, but then you have to
Yes.
figure out every tenant's parking requirement?
It's very difficult to administer.
Okay.
And, and the example that is most recent in our experiences is the one over on East Chicago with the U-Haul business, and a couple of other businesses in there. You know, there's a restaurant that wants to expand, and just, just figuring out whether they need a variance or not is difficult. What are the other uses? What are their parking requirements? What is the seating? What do we discount? What do we include? The U-Haul kind of complicates all of it. Do we count those stalls where the U-Haul sit as available or not in the calculations? It's just, it's difficult to administer. Okay?
Yeah, Bruce, I'm all for the deregulation and relaxing the requirements for variations and staff time to do that. It just doesn't make, make sense. And I just want to bring up one thing that, that we've all discussed. And I forget what case it was, but it was Microbrew, or whatever that the, that we have in town that is exceeding, all of a sudden, it gets highly impacted, and they're using a lot of parking. Has that issue been resolved?
Two quick points. All the rules we're discussing now are in the B and the C districts.
Right, right.
The business-
You know where I'm going. Is that going to fix? Can we make that fix some of the other things?
So the business I think you're referring to is called Whiskey Hill, and it's in an area zoned industrial?
Correct.
And what staff is suggesting is we don't talk about parking in industrial areas. So this wouldn't address, or fix, or help with that. That business has consistently wanted to expand, and we keep telling them, you can't expand unless you get the zoning approval that they never got, because they kind of got into that location with a liquor license, and they were never required to go through any sort of zoning review. And we keep saying, look, if you want to expand, we really need to look at your whole situation, and especially your parking. And none of this would address that business.
Well, I guess, I guess where I'm going is that, that I'm okay, my opinion is anyway, that we can deregulate it, but then do the carve-out, and maybe you attach that carve-out. I know it's kind of dangerous to maybe make it discretionary for staff, but without saying specifically, you know, in the code, what you're going to carve out, and what you're not going to carve out. But I'm just thinking of that particular situation, if that use was in a strip center that we just talked about, that's something that could be discretionary, because it will have a high impact on existing uses that may have been there, and they have been there for a long time, and now it's impacting their business. So I, I guess, yeah, I'm all for the wiping it, wiping it clean, and not having all the, all the hurdles to cross to get, to get approved in strip centers. But I'm also saying that you really ought to have a caveat, because we could have another situation, even though it's not an industrial, could have another situation develop very similar to that in a strip center.
But I don't want to jump ahead, but for your, for the recommendation for the new, for a new strip center, it's just a flat rate parking?
Right.
So that same situation could happen in a new development, and we're just, we're just saying, doesn't matter. It's one to, one to
200.
300.
Or 300.
Oh, no, that's Clarendon Hills, sorry.
It doesn't matter.
But you know what I mean? It does, in the new condition, which
Doesn't matter.
they're saying is the optimal, because we can start from scratch with rewriting this, that's the condition. So why would we put further restriction on the existing building if we're not going to do that on a new building?
In some communities, and I forget, it's listed in this table. Was that in the attachment for the other one? Actually, that was in the attachment for the B1 district. If you go back to the attachment for the B1 district, there is a community that has a flat parking requirement across the board, and then it carves out for new construction, eating, drinking, and drive-through establishments. In fact, that's Western Springs. Oh, no, not Western Springs. Where is it?
So the effect there would be you're back at where you're at now. You'd have to individually calculate every tenant space in that strip mall?
Mm-hmm. It's Downers Grove. If you go back to the attachment to the table that shows what requirements are in other communities, Downers Grove Commercial, actually, it requires no parking. Oh, that's in the downtown. I'm getting my two different rules mixed up. I'm sorry. No, 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 no. I was right. It was in, it's in attachment three. Sorry. So forget I ever referred back to attachment two. If you look at attachment three, there's a page that looks like this.
Yeah.
It's on that page. And this is for multi-tenant buildings. And it's Naperville. I highlighted it in red. Naperville has a flat requirement, and then it, for new. And then it carves out that for restaurants, well, that calls them eating, drinking, and drive-in, or drive-through, actually establishments. They type drive-in, but it should be drive-through.
I like the carve-out.
You like the carve-out for new? And Commissioner Sharp, was that your?
I'm more leaning towards taking the same approach as the B1 district discussion, where we average it and simplify. Because if we carve out, then I feel like you're back to analyzing individual tenant spaces every time for new construction, which we're trying to avoid in this change for the existing buildings. So.
And just saying, for new construction, multi-tenant commercial, it's a flat, one per 300. We don't care what the uses are.
Correct.
And again, that's a minimum. A developer is not going to want to spend the millions of dollars to put up a new building and have it be underparked. They often know
Oh, yeah.
than we do.
They know.
So if we set the floor and say, this is the minimum, they can always provide more if they want.
Right.
It's one for, I mean, 200. Sorry to help with the math. Did you say 300?
In terms of what we're suggesting?
Yeah, I thought it was for, for new construction.
Yeah. And if I said 300, I would have mistaken.
Okay.
So what, what we suggested to get this discussion started is for a new, a proposed new construction strip center, we just have a flat one per 200. But what I'm hearing Commissioner Sharp say is maybe we just loosen that up.
Oh, no, sorry. I was just reading Clarendon Hills is 300.
Mm-hmm.
And, and then the bottom, it says this is the approach Westmont staff is recommending. But I think you're talking about the approach, not the number.
Right. The approach is just a flat number. The question is, what's the number? So Clarendon Hills requires even less than what we're suggesting. But again, as with downtown, we started with the suggestion, and you were comfortable requiring even, making the requirement be even less.
Less.
And if you want to do that approach here, rather than saying new construction, multi-tenant must have one per 200, I think what I'm hearing is people would say one per 300 is enough.
Well, I'm looking at the Urban Land, this is where the Urban Land Institute report
Yes.
recommended 250. But they also did a study that said, really, what was, what was actually used was only one per 270. So I think that makes it sound like 200 is still too restrictive.
And I don't know the date of that, but we all have seen the shifting landscape that retail is kind of going away. Service uses are coming in. A lot of the service uses are gyms, like Orange Theory Fitness, or dance classes, or restaurants, or, which is in a service use, but it's another use that is still doing okay. And those generally generate a lot of traffic. And I'd be worried about being too liberal in, in your parking and creating parking problems.
The possibility of a strip center coming into Westmont in the near future, I would say is not very high, right?
Right.
We have a lot of unders, we have some that are totally inactive. And a lot, most every, all of them have a lot of vacancies in them. And I don't think anybody with a good investment head is about to start building a strip mall in Westmont.
But then you have like Westview North and Westview South that's empty. We, this is going to establish what can happen there, too.
Say that again, Allison.
Yes. Westview North and Westview South at 6,06100 block of South Gas, that's currently vacant. So we're also establishing what could happen there because of the land that, that is there. Because, you know, they may knock those buildings down. We don't know. Or remodel them.
In terms of urgency, yeah. Rules for existing strip centers is more important, because they're here, and there's constantly businesses wanting to move in, and we're constantly dealing with them.
Yeah.
You're right. As with a big building in our downtown, we might get one proposal in the next couple of years. But it'd be good to have the rules in place and what we want them now, so we're ready when that comes. So for existing? So for existing, I believe what I heard is no requirements other than for a couple of intense parking businesses. And then we'll make those businesses, we'll evaluate and see if they need a parking variance. Although I want to circle back to that because I still have a concern. And for new, um, is there a consensus or what are people thinking? Just a flat number?
I think we said three. We say three on new?
I, well, I, what Bruce brought up, I think is a good point about the change in uses in strip malls. So that makes me want to go back towards the 200.
What John brought up?
Yeah. Sorry. Why didn't I say Bruce? Yes. Exactly. So I'm, I'm more to 2, 250.
And it doesn't have to be around 100. 225.
26.
243.
249.
Based on the most recent one, which is the Starbucks anchored project down at Market Center, they just provided more than one per 200. They felt that's what they wanted to have to make sure their project had adequate parking.
See, that's a good, good business that knows what it needs and they're not going to ask for variances. They're just going to ask for it in the front.
So I'm getting tired. What's, what's our consensus here for the one proposed strip mall we're going to get in this community in the next five years? One per 300. Going once?
200.
Yeah, 250.
500.
I'd say one for 250.
All right, we got two for 250. And that's the average.
350.
I'm going to write down 250. All right.
That's fine.
And that is regardless of uses? So even if they come in and say, hey, we're going to build a four-unit strip center and the end's going to be of whatever Starbucks competitor is, we're going to say you got to have one for 250, even knowing that you've already got a restaurant use or a drive-through use lined up. And if they want to do more, they can certainly do more, but we're going to set that as the minimum.
I like the carve-out. I like the carve-out.
The carve-out like with the busy ones, yeah.
For new construction, it's easier. Well, even that's hard. Sometimes it's just impossible to avoid. It's hard to know all the variables. But what I'm hearing you say, Commissioner Lavoy, is even for a proposed new strip center, we should say right, like the one community, eating, drinking, and drive-through establishments have their own requirements above and beyond whatever the, the flat rate is for all the other uses.
And fitness centers, I think.
I like the flat rate, but I like the idea, because if you have a drinking establishment, can't you tie it in with either a liquor license or some other
Sure.
code that basically says if, if, if you have a liquor license, you have to, you know, go and it's discretionary or that, that puts you into automatically into a variation request?
All right. So what I've written down and what we'll move forward with, and again, you're going to see this again next month if you change your mind or if we get, you know, people coming out. For new construction, new proposed multi-tenant buildings, commercial, a flat one per 250 plus whatever requirements would be needed beyond that for specific uses that are known at the time of the proposal, eating, drinking, drive-through establishments. And we'll write it so that it's clear and we'll know how to interpret that. People comfortable with that?
Hey.
You like that, Wally?
Yeah.
Let's go.
All right. So then the last thing, and then I can wrap up. Of going back to the existing commercial centers, what I've heard and what I've written down and what I'm planning to move forward with is no parking requirements for new businesses that move in unless they are in that group of identified things. And that would be restaurants, medical uses, and fitness centers, and what we're calling assembly, schools and whatnot. That's what we all agree to, right? That's fine. We can do that. The only thing I worry about is just, I'm not sure that's going to change much in terms of staff's administration of these rules. Because now if a retail store wants to move into a strip mall, it's pretty easy analysis and we always allow it and, and it's easy. It's the restaurants and the schools and if we ever got a medical business where we're really struggling with calculating all of the other uses. And that's fine. I'm just saying that what we're moving forward with won't necessarily change the difficulties we encounter when we're evaluating a proposed new restaurant in a strip center, but that's okay.
And that's new or existing. Like you're not going to have any easier time with new one, new strip malls.
Well, with new, it's a little easier because, like I'm just thinking of the Starbucks anchored building. They're going to come in, they're going to have their, you know, 6,000 square foot footprint. And they're going to say, we know that Starbucks needs 2,000 of it and we'll park, we'll calculate the parking for that. And they're going to say the rest is not going to be a restaurant or they're going to say, we don't know what it is and we'll assume it's not a restaurant.
Oh, yeah. And the first time they come in, sure, it'll be easier. But then the second time, then you got to go back and say, well, what is it now? Now it becomes an existing building.
Yes.
So you have the same problem as you do now.
Although, actually, no, because I think what we, what we included in here is a clause that for buildings built after a certain date, whatever parking they provide is enough forever. And I probably should have called attention to that. Are you comfortable with the idea that once we establish the rules for what a new building would be required to provide when they're constructing it, then saying that forever after that, we don't care what comes and goes out of there? Or do you want me to strike that idea and then it would default to the other rules about existing and then we would just treat it like an existing building?
No, I think what makes sense to me is establish a number, a ratio, that works in general, because day one, there might not be any restaurants. But then in five years, it might be all restaurants. And there's, there's not the infrastructure, there's not the parking space there. So I think it's better to start with a number that is flexible and that works with different arrangements and proportions of uses within a building, rather than randomly starting with what happens to be moving in day one and then cross your fingers for the future.
So help me understand what you mean with an example. Someone comes in and they're proposing a
Like a very low use. Let's say the strip mall's got four or five tenants.
Sure.
They're all low uses except for one Starbucks.
Sure.
So the parking that's required day one when they construct it would be based on that scenario.
Right.
But nothing is stopping, you know, three other coffee shops are heavy, intense uses
Right.
from moving in. And now they don't have the parking.
Right.
Because it was calculated very low when it was built. Versus you say, here's the four or five tenant spaces, you all have to provide this average. And then that can accommodate a broader, a broader mix of uses.
So the second scenario or the second approach that you described is kind of like what staff suggested. We use the heavy commercial parking requirement of one per 200. And we just say on the front end, you want to build a new building, we're going to err on the side of requiring a lot. We don't know what the uses are and we know they're going to change. You have to put in one stall for every 200 square feet of space.
Right. I agree with that. And that's why I think
Then the carve-outs.
Well, and when we drafted this, there were no carve-outs, but that's a question.
See, there's all, there's where all your administration is, is in the carve-outs.
Correct.
If you could go flat and say, this is what you got.
The lazy bureaucrat in me says, oh, God, just a flat. It's so easy. No carve-outs. But I don't want to be lazy and just adopt a rule that's easy but creates problems. And so having a carve-out to say, boy, a medical use, that should probably be evaluated.
I don't know. I, I, I think you give a loose enough, loosen it up enough so that you don't have to have carve-outs.
If you had all low uses day one, and let's say that meant 20 stalls, and then a higher use came in, how, how would they get their more parking? There isn't more parking.
Well, see, and that's an important part of this discussion that I haven't highlighted, although I think I wrote it somewhere. If we write the rules in such a way that people are going to need a variance and we know in our guts that you and the people who come after you are never going to deny a variance, you're never going to talk to someone standing here who wants to bring their business into this community and they're five stalls short, and you know and I know that you're never going to deny that request, it's kind of like we should just loosen up the rules and, and be done with the charade of making people go through the process to get something we all know they're going to get. That's kind of an underlying idea under this whole discussion.
But even if we don't have the carve-outs for the new, I do think that the existing, there's legitimacy in there because there's, we don't know the code, we don't know what the parking provisions were when those strip malls were built. They could be underparked already. So it's a way to protect an existing situation, but in the future, we get to control that.
There's not a lot of them in town. I could drive past them and I drive past them all the time. There's not a lot of, there's a lot of vacant spaces, no parking lots.
Right. That's true, too.
Might as well take advantage of them and deregulate and get, get tenants in there.
So I'm just going to throw my own opinion out there. And, and it's motivated by two reasons. One, ease of administration, just being blunt, making it easier for staff. But then two, being more business friendly and erring on the side of maybe creating a parking problem, but doing so because you're trying to encourage businesses to come in and vacant tenant spaces to get filled up. And for those two reasons, I would suggest that the village just have a flat for existing spaces, kind of that idea of just move in, we don't care. But, I mean, that's kind of extreme and it might create a problem where a medical clinic wants to move into a strip center with two or three restaurants and when the economy turns around, it could be a problem. So there's a downside to that approach.
But if, but if you're going to move into, if you, you have this business that you're going to need this many spots, you're not going to move into a place that has the restaurants and then the high-end
Right.
and you're using this, well, I, I won't fit in there.
Right.
So they're not, you're not going to have to worry because they're not going to come in.
And then added layer of complexity to this, because this is a complex subject, is managements vary. You've got, you've got strip centers that are very tightly managed and the people who own it and manage it do a very good job. And they don't lease to three medical clinics and four restaurants because they know it's going to be a parking nightmare. You've also got strip centers, well, they'll rent anyone and everyone, they don't care as long as they get their rent check. And they might have a, a good paying medical clinic, but then they'll go and lease to a restaurant, even if it causes problems for their existing medical clinic. And, you know, then I guess the medical clinic can fight with the management or demand, you know, dedicated spaces just for them and negotiate that through their lease. Or they can leave and say, this is horrible. It's, I mean, this is tough. And if we need to, because people are looking tired, we don't have to make a decision tonight. It'd be nice to, but if you want to let some of this sink in, we can take this particular one, the multi-tenant commercial center idea, and bring it back at a future discussion. We don't have to, there's no urgency to get this.
I don't, I don't see where that's, that that would, should be necessary. I think, I think if I feel the tenor of what's, what's going on here is that we, we don't want them overregulated and we don't want to have all these carve-outs. Leave it, loosen up. The mall is there. It's not going to grow, it's not going to shrink. Who's coming and who's going, we don't know. But, you know, you, you can make a real big deal out of it, but it's not that complex.
So for existing centers, I don't want to put words in your mouth, just say, they're there, they're built, the parking's never going to change, we don't care, even if it's a high-demand use. Just move in, move out, we don't care. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah. We're hearing that because we know from our past experience, it hasn't been a problem.
I mean, that's, that's what I like to hear. I just don't want to, I want to make sure I'm hearing what you're saying and not what I want to hear. So for existing, we'll go that route. And I like that. For proposed new, do you want to just have a, there's really only two options. So this is pretty simple. A flat number, we don't care what the uses are, one per 200, one per 300, we're done. Or you could make it a little more nuanced to like Downers Grove does, and I referenced this earlier, everything requires one per whatever, 200, one per 300, except the uses that are known at the time that the building is being proposed that we know have higher parking demands, eating, drinking, and Downers uses drive-through establishments. We could expand that to include fitness and medical. Part of me is actually tempted for new proposals to do it that way. A flat number.
I, I understand what, what Wally's saying, but I do sympathize if we have existing businesses that have been there for a very long time and somebody new comes along and impacts their business in a negative way and it pushes them out of town. That's the only thing that I see that, you know, I want to deregulate it as much as anyone, but, you know.
Well, how are you going to, how are you going to crack that with regulation?
I don't, I don't think you can.
Let's say that somebody comes in next to you.
Yeah, yeah.
Because there's been no rules about how many parking spaces you're going to get and how many you're going to have.
Yeah.
And he comes in next to you, they have a problem with the mall management, not with the village of Westmont.
And, and I'll say this, one, that hasn't been a problem. I think it's a legitimate concern, but it really hasn't happened where a business has been forced to move out of a strip center.
Right. I don't, yeah.
And then number two, if that does occur, it's kind of shame on the tenant for not negotiating their lease better.
Not knowing that.
And shame on management for not managing better. But to have the village micromanage that.
I'm really thinking more, John, of your comments before about these strip centers being in transition and no longer retail, they're going to different uses and, you know, that that, it could pose a, a difference, but.
That's why I favored a stricter parking requirement, like one per 200, so that you're protected against those change of uses and service uses.
Uh-huh. That makes sense.
So I'm confident that we've ended the discussion, at least I have clear direction for existing. And the only thing that I'm still needing some clear direction on is if someone in the next five, 10, 20 years wants to build a new strip mall in this community.
Forget it.
Well, and it could happen with Westview North and Westview South. I could see someone coming in, tearing that down and saying it was overbuilt.
Yeah.
Let's just shrink it. Do we want to say, and there's only two options here, I think, a flat number, one per 200, like John just said, and that'll cover everything, or a more of a Downers Grove approach, one per 300 and restaurants, medical clinics, and whatever else needs to provide how much is needed for that when we know it's part of the initial, original proposal. Those are the two options. So let's go around.
Number two. I say number one.
I'd say one per 300 with a carve-out.
So I'm hearing a couple people say one per 300 and if they know when it's going in, it's going to be anchored by a Starbucks, the parking be calculated for that.
So how, how does this carve-out happen, though? If a higher intensity use comes in than, than what was originally planned for, and let's say the developer built the minimum parking.
Right.
There isn't more parking to give them, so they just couldn't move in. And I've never been in a strip mall that didn't have plenty of parking.
Right. I mean, the game that a developer could play is come in and say, oh, I don't have any tenants. I'm just going to provide, and again, most developers are in it to make money, so they're not going to shoot themselves in the foot. But they could just say, land's expensive, parking lots are expensive, we don't want to provide a lot of parking, there's a neighborhood right nearby, people can park in. And they'll say, we don't have any tenants identified. So we say, okay, we'll use a flat one per 300. They build it and then lo and behold, their first tenant that they sign that comes in for a business license is a medical clinic that takes up half the building with 25 doctors and, and, you know, just huge staffing and let alone the patients coming and going. And then it's like, oh, well, whoops. That's the downside of not having a carve-out.
What about grocery stores?
Well, but that, that's addressed with, sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
So a grocery store would be covered under the high-intensity parking demand, so one per 200.
Okay.
That's a, that's a business that gets a lot of traffic, and we say they need one per 200. One per 200 is a pretty hefty requirement. The only thing that requires more are the ones we keep mentioning, restaurants, one per 100, and even that's a little nuanced because we have, we don't count the kitchen and whatnot, but just call it one per 100, and then medical office, which also has a convoluted formula for figuring it out. So I'm hearing more people say, because I really want to, really want to end this discussion, for that mythical new multi-tenant commercial building that might be proposed in this community in the future, we're going to have a flat one per 300, and if they know at the time of proposal that there's a high-intensity use that we'll list, medical, restaurant, whatever, parking will be calculated for that separately per the normal rules. And that's what the rule will be for new. And then once it's built, we're done, and any other uses that ever want to move in there, we treat it like an existing. It is what it is. We're done.
And they know that when they come in.
Yeah. Which would be consistent with what I heard everyone say about the ones that are already here today. It's existing, we don't care, move in, move out, do your thing. Are we comfortable moving forward with that idea, knowing that in a month you'll get another crack at this?
Yes.
Yep. So new is one per 300 plus carve-outs. All right. Woo. Well, that was exactly what I needed. That was very helpful. I hope people feel comfortable with where we're heading. If not, again, you'll have another crack at this in a month. And then after that, it'll go to the Village Board.
Hey, as a, as a side comment, just as long as we don't emulate anything that Oakbrook has ever done as far as parking requirements.
Deal.
Okay, those are my reports, thanks.
Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson.
Okay, so I'd like to slow things down, down a little bit and go back to the staff report and see if we can have Chairman Carmichael go through the agenda a little bit and make sure we cover all the points for this meeting. So on the staff report, we have a meeting agenda. Number one is facilitating a discussion of certain topics, which, this is a discussion meeting, there are no votes being taken, so I just want to make sure everybody knows that there are some people probably on Zoom, I don't know if that's true or not, but live or whatever, so that's one thing. The other thing is, we're looking for staff, or direction to staff from the Planning and Zoning Commission related to the top priorities for proposing text amendments to the Westmont Code of Ordinances. So this is one of the tasks that we're working on today, and we will be kicking off this process over the next two to six months to make sure that we have our priorities figured out and that we're working on what is important to the community. Number three would be a Q and A about the role of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the reason that this is here is because we're trying to kind of feel out, staff is trying to feel out, and I'm kind of curious about the feedback that you might provide us as to how this went today in terms of giving us feedback in detail, because we're proposing a lot of text amendments, and I'll go into that a little bit more as we go. And I want to make sure that you're comfortable with that role, and if you would like us to expand it to other groups, or maybe take things to the Village Board of Trustee Committees first for certain items, and then come back here, what the process you see for, for us going forward. So the items that we just covered today so far are, number four, reviewing proposed draft schedule for the December PZC public hearing. There will be three text amendments that you have participated in, and they will be coming back to you in December, and we have a couple of other cases as well, but they're not text amendments, they're actual fence variances and things like that. And then the items that I will be covering will be suggested revisions to the definitions and the use tables of the zoning code. And one of the ways I would like to frame that item will be to involve discussions or kind of open up discussions, and I think that Attorney Zemanak was touching on some of these items related to, we've had a situation with COVID where a lot of businesses are, you know, suffering and vacancies are starting to increase, so kind of doing a little bit of brainstorming to figure out what we might want to encourage going forward when we see an application and we have to turn them away because you're not allowed by code. So I don't want to get into that right now until we get to that item, but I just want to kind of raise that right now. And then number six will be scheduling, or the idea of scheduling a date for a future training for the Planning and Zoning Commission related to Illinois law, ethics, you know, kind of whatever training materials you might want, new commissioner training, and what, you know, kind of exploding what we could be doing as a commission. So Chairman, I just wanted to see if you wanted to go through this list and see if you would like to kind of guide me as to what I should be presenting.
On our five items on discussion items, did we, I was kind of understanding that you were going to pick up where Bruce left off with four and five on the, creating the, amending use definitions and amending the use tables.
All right, so we'll do that. And so we have attachment four in your pockets. It's quite lengthy, and I think I did put some page numbers to it, it's quite long, it's 30 pages, and, I don't know if this is going to work. Zoom in. Okay. So attachment four talks about all of the definitions that are in our zoning code right now. Basically, we're proposing language to delete and also language to add, which will be underscored. And so this is a draft, we're not going to be taking it to a vote yet, it's quite a long process, it's all of the definitions that are in the zoning code. By way of background, we have definitions in the zoning code that are, that do not address items in the use tables, and then we also have definitions in the munico, the municipal code, that are not reflected in the zoning code, and sometimes we have definitions for the same item in both of those areas or in different parts of the chap, different chapters, depending on the focus of each chapter, and they sometimes contradict or they don't. So this is what staff is going to be going through, is just analyzing all of it and trying to see what we'll be proposing. So for now, this is just a firsthand kind of view or sweep through the definitions where we're trying to add in things that are not in the definitions that we feel need to be, and take out things that might be obsolete language or things that, you know, businesses are not really opening anymore. For example, mail order house, we're calling it fulfillment center, you know, just different things like that. So again, it's just for your information at this point, and if you'd like me to go through it, we could go down the list generally, if you're not too tired. So for example, we have accessories, oh, another thing that we're doing is we're pulling out all the definitions that relate to bulk type, you know, structure, you know, like for example, a budding, that's the first item that we deleted, which I don't even have on this list anymore, things like that, you know, contiguous two, we're removing that. Anything that has to do with structure, shape, you know, setback, you know, kind of language like that is being pulled out into a separate category for bulk. So that's another document that I didn't present today. This one is only talking about use. So that would be, on page one, would be adult uses, and then we continue on page two, and we're adding something called alcoholic liquor. Now, this is an interesting terminology, that's an example of the terminology that is used in the licensing. So we thought that instead of like coming up with something more contemporary or, you know, saying alcoholic beverages instead of liquor or something, we want to make sure that it does match up with licensing as well. We don't want to like create something completely different that doesn't, you know, relate to one another. So some of these items might be a little bit antiquated, but that would be one of the reasons. And so we're also pulling in, in parentheses, C-section or chapter, you know, such and such, because I will be providing people with guidance around that particular item. All of these that are not stricken or underlined are items that are already in our code. For example, cannabis has been a recent development, and that was new language that's been added in, so that's not going to be modified. Then we get down to some other items that we're adding. Ambulatory care facility, anchor tenant, animal care facility instead of animal hospital, animal yard. Now, this one, I wasn't sure if we should include in the structure or not, but we felt, you know, that because it's a use related to animal uses, we would add it in. Antique and collectibles, okay, shop, apiary, you know, there's some people that like to keep bees, and there is a beekeeping license or ordinance or some kind of language in the municipal code, so that's being brought into here. And as well, it'll say which complies with the regulations set in chapter 14. So we don't want to contradict anything going on, but we also don't want to include regulation or regulatory language in the definitions, so it's kind of a fine line. We want to make sure we're referring to it, but not spelling it out. Arcade, this might be an interesting one, because in terms of COVID, I think that this type of use will be going up, you know, we have video gaming for adults, but maybe some things for children, I don't know. I've been reading that, you know, kids, especially now in the wintertime, so I didn't want to remove that one. Art galleries, I added, we added that in, art and movement studio, this is a catch-all phrase for dance studios and, you know, things like that, which again, I think is going to be increasing in popularity, or hopefully we'll get somebody coming through with that. And it also includes a variety of different activities, music, painting, Pilates, yoga, fitness. And we do have a category for fitness center, but this would be something where, you know, it's an activity center with different types of creative things. I'll just go through the underlined ones because the other ones are already in the code, so. Auction house, we don't have one of those. ATM, I deleted because it's being redefined a little bit differently. I think it's under bank now as a proposal, because it's related to banking, it's not just some standalone kind of situation. Adding the word automobile to garage because that way it's easy to find, everything related to auto will be there as opposed to having to look for garage or.
But aren't these structures? You, I think you said you're putting structures in a, in a new section.
Yes, that is a good point. At the same time, it's kind of hard to, in this case, I weigh towards like there's a public garage use, you know, like a fitness center, it's, it's a storage or facility. If there's a different way of wording it, that, that would be good.
Hey, Delaney, does it make sense to put in here something for some of this new stuff like vape shops and stuff like that, that vaping didn't exist, you know, a few years ago?
Yeah.
It's, it was, it's not in here.
Oh, then it should be, and that's a.
Maybe that's something you could add.
Sure, absolutely. And that could be in there, tobacco.
Could be, yeah.
All right, so we have auto renting, leasing, that might become more popular, and I don't know if we want to change the category, kind of include like your Lyft and, you know, Uber kind of, it's not renting, what is it, share riding? So there's going to be, if you have ideas, you know, email them to me, just let's, you know, kind of brainstorm throughout the next couple months. Auto repair services, auto sales, auto sales lot as opposed to just open sales lot, because we don't really know what that means. And we as staff are interpreting it as open sales lot meaning car sales, but it could be Christmas trees, or it could be different things. So I don't know if we want to have, that's another question, more general, you know, terminology, I keep hitting that, or, or not, more specific and multiple, you know, auto open sales or auto sales lot or, you know, Lyft sales lot, truck sales, or do we want to be more general? We could even just say like we discussed earlier, general retail, then everything fits. Or, and I want to kind of also preface everything else as well, or just touch on this foundational aspect of the zoning code. The definitions are, whatever's in the definitions is what's allowed. And if we don't have a definition for it and it's not in the use tables, and maybe I'm, I'm wrong on this, but this is my interpretation, then it's not allowed. So as a community, are we wanting to open up the allowable uses, therefore we need to spell them out? So it seems that as we start writing more and expanding the amount of definitions, it seems like we're regulating more, but maybe it's the opposite, we're actually becoming more permissive by listing more allowable uses. So that's one approach. Or do we make it more into categories, general categories with fewer specific uses that are catch-all, and then we would qualify? If it's, you know, not listed, it's still allowable under, you know, or whatever language we want to use. So those are just things to think about.
Because sometimes we, we leave it to staff interpretation if it's similar, and you can add language in there, if it's similar to a listed use, staff can reasonably interpret that as being allowed or not allowed. And if someone disagrees with that interpretation, they have the right to appeal that determination to the Planning and Zoning Commission, have an administrative appeal. But yeah, one option would be to have broader categories and instead of 250 uses in each zoning district.
Yes, and I think this is a hint, you know, I think we're kind of hoping a staff that we're able to go that route a little bit more because it opens up the possibilities of somebody coming to us with something very creative out of the box, and there are businesses like that, and we can't really find a category for them, and, you know, we could say, no, you're not allowed, and again, you know, that would pose a problem. Or we could say, yes, you are allowed, and then people are saying, well, why did you let them in, or what's, you know? So just things to think about. So for now, we're, we're trying to be specific enough, but yet, you know, we're trying, it's like a fine line we're trying to walk. So all of these are auto-related, and again, we could collapse a lot of these. Instead of 10 categories, we could just have auto-related uses, you know, customer focus, you know, or just things like that. Or we could have it as, as we are having it now. For example, auto wrecking yard, I think we included this in here, it actually said junkyard, we're changing that to junk dealer, salvage yard, and the reason we're in this case stating it is because another side of the coin is if we call it out, then we're able to limit it and regulate it. So by not, by leaving it out completely, we're probably, you know, not allowing certain uses that, that are acceptably, you know, neighborly without having to say not at all. So some of these are, are in here because we're able to regulate them by stating them or calling them out. So here's your bank, automated teller machine, that's why the other one was removed. And I think I added on or off the premises as kind of to cover everything, drive-through or in the lobby, or sometimes you have them on the wall, that kind of thing. So we'll go through these more quickly. Barber shops and beauty parlors, it's an old-fashioned phrase, so we wanted to come up with something more all-encompassing, and we didn't present this proposal today, body art facility, even though it, because it is regulated by the village, but that's an example of where we're trying to include it in the definitions, the tattoo parlors, but we're including it so that we can regulate it, so that we're allowing it only in certain places or with a special use with certain conditions. So that's the other side of it. The definitions are only definitions, and then we have the item number, well, attachment five that talks about where we're going to allow them and how we're going to regulate them. So this particular list is only a general one. So here we have beekeeping, ca apiary, again, we're kind of trying to come up with terminology, and if you prefer one or the other, that's fine. So these are just different ones. Body art is figuring quite extensively on that page. Broadcasting facility, I think there's a radio station just outside of town, and, you know, we're, as a village, discussing certain ideas in terms of locating certain properties in town, so that's another reason to include it. Car wash.
Excuse me, you struck brew pub because, why?
Oh, because that's the older definition that defined it in terms of a percentage of sales, and we created new rules called craft.
So we're just not using the term brew pub at all?
Right.
Okay.
And so that's actually going to be on your next page, on the bottom of page seven. You're going to have your. You're going to have your craft alcoholic beverages. And that is an example of a catch-all phrase. Kind of includes brew pubs and it includes, you know, maybe restaurants that serve. It doesn't limit it to, it doesn't include regulatory language such as 25%. It just simply has more of a description of what it means. So, and it also includes wine. So that, that's another example of a definition where you're trying to, you know, parse what you're talking about. And we might get somebody that proposes a wine brewery, I mean, a wine winery. I don't know what it would be called. But because we didn't think about it and it wasn't in the definition, we have to say no. So that's one of the reasons. So cultural facility, daycare center. These are examples of daycare home. Yes?
Does that mean going back to craft alcoholic beverage producer? That one has quite a bit of regulation in it, seems.
Yes, and we're leaning towards not doing it that way. So this is one of the earlier text amendments. And as you can tell, it's quite long, the 50% and so on and so forth. That's a regulation. Those should be more like conditions, especially because a lot of these are special uses. So, and then we do have a lot of those regulations already in those sections. And that could be something we can amend and try to qualify. And we don't want to be redundant either, you know, having regulations in the definitions and having them. Because that gives an opportunity to, for misinterpretation or, you know, if you don't word it exactly the same way. What are you trying to say? Dry cleaning, eating place. It's another example of a more generic type of category. Instead of restaurant, it's like an eating place. Well, it could cover outdoor, indoor, a deli, inside a office building, a restaurant. Any number of things.
I see you did away with economic development director.
Well, you know, I was taking out things that didn't really relate to use. So if community development was in there, I think there's another one also that I took out, like village board of trustees. It's just not a use-related definition. Educational, education facility. Again, that's generic. But we do have three categories. So it does provide for those differences in terms of use. They're all different in terms of hours and they create different impacts. Electric vehicle has been added in. This is an example of an item that with your direction, we might want to take to, say, an environmental committee and talk about sustainability and different types of uses to bring the community to a different sector in terms of employment. You know, it could be solar. There are some houses that have solar, you know, electric vehicle, charging stations. We had an application right now to add charging stations to an existing car lot. So we're allowing them because there's no change and they're not building new structures or anything. They're just adding the type of pedestal that allows a car to be charged at the location where they're already going to park. So if they're already in a certain stall, we're just allowing them as long as there's electricity and it all fits in with the building code. But we are adding that type of definition into the definitions related to. Especially now with Tesla, the announcement now that they're, I think they signed a lease for 11 years. So that's good news, right? They're going to stay in the community and they're also going to be adding. They've been talking about adding charging stations. So that's why we're kind of expanding that type of. Emergency medical center. Some of these definitions, if you see C-section, such and such, you'll know that it came from the municipal code in terms of making sure we're including all the zoning-related definitions that are in the municipal code, pulling them into the zoning code. Entertainment outdoor. I don't think we had something like this in the code right now. We don't have it, but it does come from the municipal code. So making sure that we're giving a nod to it and making sure that it's understood that zoning is an important part of permitting a special event, you know, and making sure that the space is adequate, that there's parking and safety and different things like that. Movie theater is going to be collapsed into entertainment establishments. We have video arcade. So now that I'm noticing, I might want to take out the arcade language since it's in here. So as I'm looking at it, I might want to do that. Live entertainment. And as we're going through this over time, over the next month or two, we'll probably want to put this on the January agenda or February. I don't know. Or not. You know, I'd like some direction from you as to how we should proceed, what your comfort level is. If we should take it to different committees, if we should pull out different items, group them or focus on each individual one. Fallout shelter is here. And that's an interesting one. I'm leaving it in there. I don't know. Farmer's market, financial institution. We have a bank category, so we might want to delete that one. But yet we have a ATM related to banks, so I don't know if we want to leave it. So these are the things I, you know, we weigh as we do things. Fitness center and health club. That's related to a new text amendment that we went through recently. So we'll have to double check and make sure we're not doubling up on that one. Food court, again, maybe we want to remove that one and keep it under eating area. So as we read over and over and over again, we're going to, you know, a staff going to be, you know, combining and cleaning it up a little bit. Food prepared comes from the municipal code. There are licenses related to food delivery and sales. And there's a term that they use in the licensing.
Can I make a recommendation?
Yes.
Some of the things that aren't use-related, you started off by saying this is trying to better define the zoning uses.
Yes.
But you've got some terms in there like emergency medical services that have nothing to do with a zoning use. It's just something that's referenced in chapter 42, which deals with fire prevention. And I understand it might not be defined in chapter 42, but it doesn't have anything to do with zoning. Maybe those items should be removed because we're really not, I don't think the intention is to define every term that's used anywhere in the municipal code.
Right, no.
We're just trying to address primarily zoning uses. And if it's a word that relates to a use, like bank or something, you can define that separately.
Yeah.
But like, you know, I don't know, food prepared, you know, and you're cross-referencing chap, looks like chapter 74, maybe?
Yes.
Maybe if that's necessary or not in the zoning ordinance.
Correct, I agree, yeah. Now, the only reason I might want to leave it in, or we might want to leave it in, is as we're looking and I'm going to be cross-checking, for example, with eating place. If they mention prepared food in the definition of eating place, I might want to keep food prepared as a definition. And then emergency medical services ties in with hospitals. I don't know. But I take what you're saying. So this is why those are being pulled in, just, you know, trying to be out of the box in terms of that. But maybe, I mean, we don't have an EMS category. I get that, so. Yeah. But that is the goal. So less is more, I always think. And also the umbrella aspect I like. And then in the definitions, being able to include language such as limited to, not limited to, you know, including, or, you know, things like that that qualify. But yet the term itself is more of an umbrella term so that it's easier. And then people know, are we, are we talking about an eating place or a fast food restaurant? Or are we talking about a food court? It gets all of that out of our hair, you know, in terms of when we're going to interpret something. So be mindful, this is a first draft that takes you all the way through A, from A to Z, and pulls what we thought would be germane. But we're, it's a work in progress. And so, yeah, we'll be, all of these comments are being recorded. I don't take notes, but I will be pulling all of these comments in as I work through this. Okay, foster care facility. Yeah, that could be an example, for example. You know, we're not zoning for foster care facilities. So we're, that's a, it could be tied in with daycares, including foster care facilities because we license those. So I might want to pull that language into home occupation or daycare home or something. Okay. Gas station pulling in service station as opposed to gas station. Service stations are a little more of a catch-all. They include sometimes mini-marts and we don't want to limit it to just a gas station. If somebody wants to put a mini-mart in, do we then also have to see if a mini-mart is a special use versus a gas station not being one? And that creates some kind of confusion. So, you know, if we know a gas station comes with a mini-mart or not, we can just blanket say yes or no. Government office. This is something that would be used, good to get some guidance on in terms of is that considered a public use? Or government-owned versus a public service and things like that. So I don't want to get too much into that. We might want to delete that one, but, you know, that's just a definition that we pulled in. Group home. Do you have any questions as we go along? Here's one, hen yard. There's another one that seems to be more of an accessory-type building, but yet it's also a use because, you know, maybe some residential districts allow someone to have hens or chickens. Some don't or might not, so. But in terms of the location on the lot, we're not going to include that language in here. So hen coop is an example of that. So the hen yard is the actual space, the, you know, land usage. And then the hen coop is like the actual structure. So we're pulling that one out. So here's hospital. We could say includes emergency medical services because we do address that in the municipal code. And then refer to the section.
I just missed the hen part.
Hotel motel, including that together. Again, we have a hotel motel tax and it's also referenced in section 10. So we deleted hotel. Housing industrial is part of a land use category. So we're pulling that in and defining it because their land use does not define it at this point. Industrial design. Institution, we already have that in the code. Junk dealer. This is where we're describing a junk dealer, a salvage yard. And as you can tell, it's covered by section 22. So there are regulations about how those are handled in terms of code enforcement or nuisances or other things. So we do want to pull in a definition that is able to cover that. Laboratory, we're calling it research laboratory. There is a actual use category in the OR district that's research and design laboratory. So I think I'm going to add and design to that. Land use, I thought we would bring in, what is land use? Okay, laundrette to me is an old-fashioned facility. I'm not even sure what the difference between a laundrette and a laundry mat is. So, you know, if you all want to help with all these things, I think that'd be great. So I just said laundry facility. We could delete laundrette. I'm not sure why I kept it. So library, we didn't have a definition for library, even though we have a library. Licensed premises. This I felt was important because some facilities, some bars are licensed. I mean, they should be licensed. So this covers that and it is a licensing issue. And it also, this language comes from that section of our code, the licensing section. So it talks about where licensed premises can be located. So it talks about golf courses. And then this is the actual language that was used in the municipal code's part of it. So we may want to modify a little bit. Liquor license establishment. So it's just more detailed and you might want to tighten that up. But I felt it was kind of, you know, logical to bring that in. Live performance venue, live-work dwelling. We don't really have something like that, but I think, you know, now with COVID, I think it's more important to recognize that live work is not only an option, but a necessity or, you know, it's just the way things are now. So making sure that our regulations are able to allow these configurations, I think is important. Lumberyard was not in the code, even though we have quite a large lumberyard. And it also talks about, it also deals with outdoor storage, the lumberyard issue. You know, how are you going to store it and all that? So we're not going to pull those regulations in, but we're going to mention it. Massage therapy establishment, that's defined. And I think it was brought in. We just recently had a text amendment and I'm not sure if this is a definition that was in there, but it's underlined, so I'll have to go back and check. But it pulls in from, it pulls in the definition from the state and also from our licensing language so that it's not contradicting that. So, but it does seem a little cumbersome. Medical or dental clinic is another one that we're working on as a text amendment. Medical cannabis, we have that in the definitions, but now we also have adult-use cannabis. And I think those are different. They require different licenses. So we're going to leave this definition in here because of that. One's recreational, one's medical use. Microbrewery was also removed because, again, it had the regulation in it and it also was replaced by our new language. Microblading is in here because it is a regulated licensed activity with the village and it's also part of some of the services that may or may not be offered. And where can they be offered and so on. So I was suggesting we bring this into the body art, just kind of collapse it altogether. But because of the licensing and different reasons, we're not able to at this time, you know, because of the way that it's handled. Hotel is existing in our language. I'm probably going to delete this because it's now part of hotel motel. So I'll pull in germane language from both. Probably look at the tax language as well because I think it has to do with the number of rooms and all these different things. So that's kind of regulatory, but at the same time, the definition does need to match up. And if we allow, say, a hotel that has 23 rooms instead of 25, that has implications to our taxes and maybe want to look at that when we're doing things. Multi-tenant retail center, another word for strip center. Motor freight terminal. I just removed the word motor. I don't think people really say motor, cars. So now this is interesting because we have a train line and we have a M1 district. So maybe we'll have some kind of use like this at some point. I don't know if we're going back to that ever again. Museum house is a dwelling. This would cover our Greg Historical Society, Greg House. Okay, non-conforming use. Instead of looking up non-conform, yes?
How about an auditorium? Is that, is that a land, that would be a land use?
Good point, yes.
Not as structural as such.
But it's also, no, it's also a use, I would think. It's a use, so I'll pull that in. It's a good point. Non-conforming use, where people are going to look for use, non-conforming use, conforming. And, but at the same time, some people are going to look up non-conforming use. So we want to make sure that they're pointed to the definition under use. So some of these are going to be repeated. Nonconformity is another word that's similar. Nonprofit organization. It's again, a licensed and regulated and, you know, something that we feel should be defined. Nursing home is a little bit redundant, but at the same time, there are licensing differences. So this is a work in progress. There's a lot of work to do. Off-street parking. We're using motor vehicle. We might just want to say automobile. I don't know. And again, I'm getting questions about trucks, you know. First student parking lot is for sale or maybe for sale. And so I'm getting questions, well, can trucks park there? Can we? Can we have some, you know, fleet-type things? And I don't know, you know, because automobiles don't really cover trucks. So, you know, I might want to start, you might want to start adding that language in. Office, we didn't have a definition for office. Open space, again, we don't have definition for that. Outdoor dining, no definition for that. All of the underlines are things we don't have definition currently, but we're proposing to define. Nursery, childcare or school, we may want to delete that one because we have a daycare center now and we just approved a text amendment for that. Nursing home was a definition that we deleted and we replaced it with nursing homes, kind of a shorter version. Or, there are a couple of other ones. Again, I bring up the licensing differences between the different licensing definitions. Open sales lot, we have and we're suggesting calling it out as what it is, autos or whatever the open sales lot might be. I do think that people would like to know if we're going to allow, say, something like caterpillars stored all over the place or versus cars being sold or not, you know, or. So that's a reason why in that case, we do have different definitions. Open space is another definition for open space. And alphabetically, I think there's a problem, but we'll just keep going. Open air intense sales is a current definition that we have and we use that for special events usually or for, you know, Christmas sales or kind of temporary uses. Which we don't have a temporary use permit that we administer at the department. But we, at the same time, have regulations in the definitions for something like that. So this one I haven't done anything with as far as crossing it out because it does have a policy question about it. So something to ponder. Outdoor recreation, I deleted, or we deleted here, girl scout and boy scout, just things that are, and then accessory uses. You know, just something about it. Buildings and things like that. Just what is outdoor recreation, you know? Let's just keep it simple and not call out a specific organization. I think it's, it could be any other organization hosting this type of thing, so we don't want to limit things. Owner. You know, sometimes we get people wanting to submit applications and it's, someone doesn't own the land and they want a variance. Or they don't have a lease, or they have a contract, or they have some verbal agreement to do something with it. And, you know, we're saying the owner needs to be the applicant or at least sign the application. So this is a simple definition, you know. Paint store. This is interesting, we have it in here as a very detailed. And the police department actually has an important distinction with paint stores and hardware stores that sell certain types of paint, certain types of products. And so there's some regulatory things that come in there and we don't look at that in zoning situations. But when we're going to, you know, say a hardware store can come in by right, but yet they have products that are sold that need to be regulated by the police department. You know, there's no oversight. So those are, when we get into the use table situation, we can start calling out, well, maybe those need to be special uses. And that's where we want to make sure that all the departments are able to see what we're doing so that they can say, oh, we do need to be involved in this and that and the other, you know, use that's coming in. Park, what is the definition of a park? We're not saying public park, we're saying non-commercial nonprofit facility. Or maybe not, maybe you want to say public or maybe you want to say publicly owned. So that's, you know, all of these need to be worked on, they're just proposals. Parking lot, some of them are for sales, for sale. Some of them are for consideration, where you park and you pay a fee and someone operates a parking lot. That's different from off-rank parking spaces for free, you know, because, or spot hero. So we get into these different things and how detailed do we want to be or not? Right now, we require special uses for parking lots that are off-site, you know. And so those are the things that we need to kind of think about. And I think it's an iterative kind of process between the definitions and the use tables and back again. And trying to see what, what's going to serve the use tables and the other way around. Performing arts studio, we might want to take that one out because we talked about movement and activities, that section that calls out all different things. So we might want to take that one out. Personal service establishment. This, this is a catch-all. And a lot of these are regulated separately and differently depending on what they are. So for zoning, we would be more comfortable with something like this and just say, yes, it's allowed. And then notify everybody, or a nail salon is coming. And then let, you know, the, you know, health department or whomever decide how they want to regulate the use. But as far as like where to locate it in town, I'm not sure it makes a difference, or maybe it does. So these are things that, you know, we need guidance on. Personal care service, same type of situation. That's, I'm not sure what that one is actually. So that seems a little generic or it could apply to different things. Pet shop, place of worship, there's another way that could be said, it could be religious institution. But the idea would be that the use is the same no matter what denomination or, or, you know, type of religious group it is. So that's one terminology that's used in communities, place of worship. Or religious institution may or may not be suitable because, I don't know, of the way people look at it at different things. But we do have place of worship, see religious institution. So that's another option, you know, if you decide you prefer one or the other. And because these are both popular, you know, that's why you would keep the other one and refer to the one that you're actually using. But you don't want to use both. Physical culture and health services was taken out and replaced by the fitness category or definition that we have. Plan development, we have law of plan development agreements and plan development areas. I don't think we had a definition, so that's in here now. It's a very simple one. It just simply says approved in accordance with the plan development procedures. Or we could say with the agreement that was in place. Or we could be complicated and make it more specific because I'm not sure where to go with this one. Planned unit development is something we don't currently have in terms of how we administer projects and developments. But that's an idea, if we do have it in the future, to include a definition for it. Playground, is that similar to a park? Or is a playground contained inside a park or does it matter? I think they're different, you know. But that's the definition that's in here. Psychiatric hospitals, we're collapsing all the different types of medical into, that are inpatient. I guess would be a way of looking at it into one terminology, so just hospitals. Public place, what does it mean to be a public place? Is it public use, is it publicly owned? You know, that word, so we're going to define it. It's also in section 58, so we want to make sure it doesn't contradict what's already in the municipal code. Because our job is not to amend or do anything to the municipal code. Those are the chapters that are our village code ordinances that are not zoning-related. So we're only looking at appendix A, but making sure that they all match up. Public safety facility. So that's, you know, police. I think, you know, with homeland security and, and these fusion centers and so on, that would be another reason to have, just a catch-all, you never know. Or not, maybe you want to keep it separate. Public works facility, we have a couple of those. We just had a new one that's being showcased this year. Real estate project sales office, this is, you know, in there, you know, when we have new developments and it might be nice. Reception banquet facility, a lot of communities like to have these banquet facilities for special events, parties, weddings, things like that. Recreation, what does recreation mean, recreational facility? Indoor/outdoor recyclable material, as opposed to scavenger, this is different and is regulated in our municipal code and is defined. And it also talks about containers and different ways that it's done and who does it and so on. So it just refers you to that section. Recycling, what it means, we may or may not need to leave that in there because it's not land use. Or it is, actually. Refrigeration locker plant, I know we have a couple of those in town and a proposal is also, I heard of, somebody called and asked about that, so that's in there. And it is regulated in the municipal code where they talk about it there as well. Religious institution, here's a definition option that could be chosen as to the place of worship. And this is in our municipal code, section 22 as a definition. So we might want to keep it because of that or not. Resale confinement store is in here, research laboratory was removed even though I said it would be kept. And I think, lo and behold, on the next page, we have research and development defined. We have a new business in town called MedChine, which is a research and development facility with some assembly, light assembly. And so a definition for that should be in here and this is the proposal. This definition is taking into consideration the nature of this particular business to make sure that they are, you know, it's consistent. Residential care facility, we have quite a few of these different types of institutions that are being reflected throughout the definition section. And they could be by age, but I think we're opting towards the licensing again. I keep bringing that up because, you know, we're always going to defer and make sure that, that these are licensed, that they're, you know, meeting all the requirements. But we're not policing or making sure of that, but we're, we're just acknowledging that we're not going to contradict whatever they're doing in terms of the definitions. Restaurant is another option as opposed to eating place. Or maybe we keep both depending on excluding restaurants, you know, when we talk about eating places. And those refer to delis, outdoor seating areas or outdoor eating areas or different things like that. Licensed restaurant, there is a chapter 10 that talks about licensing. You know, licensing restaurants for different reasons. And again, that's outside of our purview. Do we want to be that specific or just simply say restaurant? Retail goods establishment. This is our catch-all. This is where I'm selling something, okay. Yeah, is it allowed, is it not allowed? Do we want to be that general or not? Now, the other reason it's in here is because it's reflecting the Illinois retailers' occupation tax definition. So anyone with a retailer's tax number is a retail operation. And so are we going to parse, you know, the types of retailers that can come in somewhere or not? We have been doing that, you know, as a community, as a zoning code. But are we excluding people that have this number because they're not fitting into the code? So this category is a way to kind of catch things like that is a proposal. Retailer, this is already in our code, talks about blueprinting. I just said photocopy, I don't even know, like a Kinko's, you know, or FedEx, I think, because it's not even around anymore. But, so, I'm not sure about this one, but we're keeping it in, even though it's a specific type of retailer. I don't know if we want to be calling out all of these so specifically. We have a actual printing publisher that came into North Blackhawk. And so that was a question as to whether they could do it or not, but they're a marketing company and they do printing and publishing. And, but they market cars, you know. So it's one of those where we had to really figure out how was the lot being used. And they have a big machine with printing equipment and then they bring in cars one at a time and they photocopy, take pictures of them and prepare their marketing materials. So this is where that would fit in. Retailer telecommunications, this is section 74. I think, I don't know how, this is a bigger conversation as far as telecommunications, but I think that does need to be brought into the definitions. We're adding this retreat house. Some people, you know, will use a house and they'll rent it out for retreat, they'll have a yoga thing or they'll have some kind of, I don't know, class. So that's in here, I don't know if that's appropriate or not. Rooming house, adding that in because it's in our code, even though I feel it's a little more outdated. Or it could fit into maybe shared housing or short-term rentals or, or hotel motel, but I don't know. So that's in here anyway because it's in our municipal code. Sale, retail sale, again, another catch-all, which describes what retailing is. Is business-to-business retailing, I don't know, but that's a definition here. It could be a service, anything where consideration is paid. That again, is kind of tricky because it's very broad. Scavenger talks about, you know, section 66 defines it, so we have it in the definitions. School premises, this is more of a structural definition. It's a building used for educational purposes, that's in our section 58. Second-hand goods dealer. Pawn brokers, governed in article four, talks about, does not including a pawn shop. But includes, I guess, a thrift store and things like that, consignment shops, but yet we have another definition for that as well. Self-service storage facility. We do have a few of those in town and some are not official, some of them are on Blackhawk, I guess we have one. That's, I forget the name, storage, store it, you store it. So that would be what that covers, service station would be your gas station. And this definition comes from section 22, so it's a little, you know, it talks about volatile fuels for motor vehicles or internal combustion engines. So, you know, I don't know if we want to touch this type of definition. Shooting gallery, section 22, it's covered there, so it's brought into the definitions. Social lodge, meeting hall, is that similar to the other definition about the banquets? I don't know, this is more of a fraternal.
Or fraternal, yeah.
Type, not, so that's a separate definition. Specialty food service. You know, some of these may be redundant or not, but, you know. This one here, I think would be for packaged goods where it says where no outside impacts. But it also includes preparation, so it could be catering could be included in here. So, you know, we're not, this one doesn't call out catering. And I know catering is not allowed in certain places, so I think we need to pull that in as a definition. Storage yard. This is an important one because it's in the nuisance code where it talks about outdoor storage and how do we want to define that? This is a very simple definition, that is the principal use for more than 24 hours. Which would cut out the ones that are sometimes, you know, well, 24 hours, that's a day, actually, it includes a lot of things.
If it's specifically in the code, don't you normally put it there in parentheses?
Yes.
Is it on storage?
No, actually, this, I don't think the definition is in the code, but the, but the governance of it is. So it's under the nuisance section and I don't know if they have a definition or not. So I'll have to double-check. Surface area of a sign, people ask me, how do you measure the sign? And there is a bit of a definition somewhere, but I thought I would just bring it in here. And I'm not sure if this is the exact one we're proposing, we'll have to tweak it and recheck it out. This, I took out everything about anatomical, all these definitions here because they're not land use-based. They're something else. Tattoo, tattooed, this would be section 46, it is regulated, so we're calling it out. Even though we're also proposing a broader category of body art that includes tattoo parlors, but it also includes microblading and includes beauty salons. So, you know, do we want to go that route or do we want to, you know, consider these differently?
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes, please.
Maybe what we should do is, number one, is number these.
Okay.
And give it to us with a category of it's good like it is, it's not good like it is, a checkmark. And if you want to combine with another number, you know, we could just click it, combine with that number. And like have categories so we can have some structure to our comments and just give it back to you.
Okay, yes, should I finish or should we, are we?
I'm just, I'm just, how are you going to get our input?
Okay, so.
You're going through all of these and I'm just suggesting that it might be something that we could just, you know, provide electronically or something that we could just say, hey, combine or add or like an auditorium comment. We have other ones that are maybe missing or something that we'll think of and we can add to it.
Exactly.
And provide you with, with a, kind of a, give us a structured form here and you want to add, subtract.
So let me just go through, rumble's done and then I'll touch back on that because I think that's a very good option. So telecommunications is brought in, it's governed by section 74. We have requests for telecommunications facilities on water tanks and antennas and things like that. So that language is in there, but we don't have a lot of definitions about like the towers themselves. Can new ones come in, locational criteria for these telecommunications towers, water towers or other structures that are not strictly telecommunications. But we do have definition language in section 74. Cell site, tower, tower height, talks about that. We want to probably start bringing in regulations. I know DuPage County has some, but they're a little less strict than possibly we might want as far as zoning and proximity and things like that. And, okay, so temporary use, we're proposing a definition for that to be brought into the zoning code. It is covered under section 22. And temporary contractor's office, we don't have a definition, but we do mention it in our code. So what is it, temporary outdoor entertainment, promotional event, outdoor sales, you know, is it more than 90 days? Now, this is similar to the open tent one and it does have regulations in it. So we probably don't want to be too regulatory in our definition, but we probably do want a definition. Outdoor storage container, we don't have a definition for that as far as temporary versus such as the pods and those that come in and leave within a day or two. You know, the difference between those. Tenant frontage, a lot of times people just don't know what that is. Tenant space, theater, that's brought into another one that included, that was included elsewhere. And what I'm probably going to do as a task is go through and do keyword searches and if they crop up like in five different places. And those will be the ones that I'll start, you know, merging together. Tobacco and vape, this is what you were talking about. The definition is already in here for vape lounges. We have tobacco and vape products that are sold. They may or may not be in standalone stores or they could be inside, you know, a mini mart or different places. Gas stations and there are regulations about those, does not include cannabis. Toxic or noxious matter, what is that? We do have performance standards in the manufacturing district and also some, I mean, the same performance standards are to be adhered to in the office section. So we want to talk about those a little bit. Use accessory, what is that? What is a conforming use, what is a non-conforming, legal non-conforming, permitted, principal, public, use, special use? You might want to add temporary use. Usable open space, now we're just saying open space because how people use it is too prescriptive to tell them if they can put clothing on a line or not. I mean, that's, we're just deleting usable. As long as it's open to the sky, there's no traffic, there's certain criteria that will define it as open space. Utility, a public utility is defined in section 74. So I didn't spell it out here, but it is spelled out a little bit here. Utility company, so a company versus a public utility use. It could be the transformer versus the, you know, there's different ways to look and parse all of this. Utility, what is a utility? Utility scale, energy production, this is where we can get into the energy and sustainability and all that. I don't know if anybody's into that or not. Vehicle dealership, that could be under automobile, I think, might want to pull those together. Vehicle fueling station, vehicle versus automobile might be better because that would include your trucks, fleet and so on. Vehicle rental, again, we go back to that idea and I think those need to be collapsed together. Vehicle repair, probably better than automobile because it includes motorcycles, all-terrain. Some communities want to limit all of this, you know, you don't want a huge, big, I don't know, RV in your front lawn. You know, maybe everybody's going to be parking all these things all over the place. So maybe vehicle repair, vehicle, utility, vehicle sales is too broad. And so that's just for consideration. Video gaming was deleted because it was, we have new definitions related to some regulations that were developed. Video gaming terminal is described in section 22. And I think we might want to delete it again, going to the point of some of these are not zoning related, they're too micro-focused and we don't really need all of that. Warehouse and distribution is important to define, we do, do we allow it or not and in what way? Outdoor, indoor, but again, we're not going to put that in the definition, but we do need to define. Wholesale establishment versus retail, we might want to say business-to-business or we don't care, I don't know. Wireless telecommunications is again telecommunications, we might want to delete this one. And zoning map, what is a zoning map? So this is just the first run-through and as you can tell, there's a lot of things to do, there's a lot to do on this one. And to go back to your point, maybe we can do a two-for-one and work on the spreadsheet that was provided to you for the use tables. And then use that to propose your changes to the definitions that are inside each of those boxes because it's the same thing. Basically, what we want to make sure is that the definitions list matches the spreadsheet use tables. And I don't know if anyone has any energy to go through a little bit. And I just shared a page or two, so that we don't fall asleep, but there's certainly a lot of homework to do. And, I don't know if I can zoom in a little bit more here. And what I started doing here, we started with, so propose, okay, we started with the existing terminology. Which is what you have in front of you with the underlines and so on, right? What, that was not straight through. And then we started deleting some of these and this is a process we took, right? And then we added another column called additional or alternate. So a lot of these were like the underlined sections, right? So here we have, for example, we took out adult use and we added adult uses, including bookstores and so on. And we have a definition that's a little more fine-tuned or detailed. Then we did something else. Want to make sure that they also match up with the business licensing categories, okay? So those will be here as well. For example, at the very bottom here, you'll see, I don't know if I can see it here, advertising bench. There's a license to place an ad on a bench in town, as you see in other communities. But I haven't really seen that around here. And so, do we want to say, okay, business licensing sheet, let's delete bench? Or do we want to add it into our definitions and then say they're not allowed? These are the things that we're kind of, so right now, the spreadsheet is doing is pulling it all together. It's not making any judgments except you did see I crossed it out, maybe I'm kind of suggesting something. And then, just so you see what this means when you go home and take a closer look at it, I don't know to what degree, did you all have a chance to look at it? I mean, okay, good. So then, there's some subcategories. For example, there's a category, well, I don't have it here. So there's a category, for example, video gaming. Or it'll say one to five or then five to 20, you know, or it'll say seating, restaurants. It'll say one to 20 seats and then 21 to 50 seats and it'll be a different category, so higher intensity use. So for zoning purposes, it's a larger restaurant and versus an eating area, versus a deli, versus a, you know, a little coffee shop square or whatever. So that's what that means. And, okay. So then we have existing use tables terminology. This is where we're trying to match up the uses with the definitions in our zoning code. And as you can tell, we had a definition for air rights. But no, you know, existing terminology in the use table because that's not a use. And we're not regulating air rights in this community, so we're deleting it from our definitions list. But at the same time, we have a existing use terminology for amusement establishment excluding adult entertainment cabaret, right? That's in our use table, but we do not have a definition for it. So this is where, you know, as staff, we're looking at definitions that we have for items that are not regulated. Like an arcade here or, what is that, artisan manufacturing establishments, right? Now this will be regulated and when I finish this spreadsheet, it'll contain categories that are in the manufacturing district as well. And those boxes will be filled in. So you'll see up here, proposed definition for the use table, here I need to fill this in. Animal hospital, here we have antique and collectible shop, a retail establishment engaged in the sale of goods. That is a proposed definition to an existing use table category, okay? So that's what that column does. Or maybe it was defined already and it would be on your first column, but in this case it wasn't. So we added a definition for antique and collectible shop for which it's allowed by right in the B1 and allowed by right in the B2. And so that's what we're going to keep doing and working on and filling out. And what I could do is if you want to email me, I could share that document would be another way of doing it if you're comfortable and if it's appropriate for the planning commission members to do so. I would be happy to share that email and then share the document.
She could do that?
Yeah, because I can't read even the paper version, the print's too small and having a computer version might be, even with my readers.
Yes, I agree and I was going to open it on the screen, but it's too cumbersome and we don't have time. So I will go ahead and share that with all of you. And anyone that's, you know, that wants to participate can also email me and I can, you know, take comments about this task.
I'm suggesting that maybe like add, you know, something for us, that checkmark on the box kind of thing, good, not good, or a good word with revision or whatever. Give us a, I'll put a check here or a check here and maybe add a comment thing just from us if you want. Now, we don't have to make comments, we don't have to, I mean, what I'm saying is that gives us at least a matrix to work off of where you get input from us.
Sure, I would be happy to do that. It will be a large spreadsheet and the font is small, but I think it's, it's a good way to really look across the row and see, you know, business licensing and use tables. And, you know, if you have a better idea of how to structure it, and I will add a column that for your, for yes or no.
So we're not, we're not changing any uses in the use table?
Yes, I'm proposing that we do because as I said before, we have a use table for this community that was developed a long time ago. And a long time ago, didn't have the certain categories of businesses that we may or may not want to attract. So as you're working on this, and this is a very key question because as you're working on this, you're visualizing Westmont. And you're saying, you know, what's happening here? What types of businesses are coming in? Do I know of someone who's trying to do something and does that fit in here? Do we allow it, do we not allow it? And if you're even wanting to go a step further and say, yes, no, in terms of permitted or special use or conditions or some issues. I mean, you can, if you have time, you can get into this as much as you'd like, I think. But yes, I think we want to do that. Because remember, right now, if it's not called out specifically, it's not allowed. It's not the other way around. It isn't, well, it's not mentioned, so we could do it. And if it's mentioned, it's regulated, no, it's just simply not permitted.
So it does, for retail, so if it's, if one of the uses is retail, you can, we do not currently just say retail may include but not limited to and then blah, 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 that's not how it's written?
Retail may include or may not?
It's open if you say retail, including but not limited to, if you use that language, then it's up for your discernment if something fits in that category or not. I assume that's how it was written. You're saying that every one of these definitions, if we don't keep all these definitions, it eliminates it as an option.
Right, so remember that the underlined definitions such as the one you just said are not in the code.
Right.
You know, it'll say haberdashery shop, notions shop, you know, tailor shop. So what if somebody's selling something similar like bags? And they're not tailoring it, they're not like stitching them. You know, then we don't allow it, only, you know, it just, it's very limited, I think. So, and I think right now with looking at all of these, I pulled some of these from other communities and other things that are going on. We could look at Downers Grove, we could look at communities that are model communities, things we'd like to be like and even look at what they're doing. Downers Grove, I know, has a lot of environmental, like solar and, you know, this is why I brought it up. Because they have all of those, they've thought through all of those types of industries and they're calling them out. So since we don't call it out, like right now, the charging stations, I was able to permit because they're in existing, you know, second story and there's already electrical outlets and all they have to do is put a thing, like some pedestal, and they're parked their car right next to it where there's already a stall. But for some other charging stations, it's like they have to dedicate stalls, remove parking for regular cars because it'll only be for charging and they have to be in a certain part of the, you know, they're more complicated, they're actual structures, which we don't allow, accessory structures. So we can't permit them. So do we want to be general and say we allow accessory structures of any size and as many as we want? As long as they're five feet away from the lot lines, we could allow charging stations and we could allow other things as well. Or do we want to say charging stations, then they must be this way?
And I think one of your, your question went to retail and we don't have a use, I'm just looking now at the use table, for example, in the B1, B2 district. We don't have a category that says retail. Instead, it says things like shoe stores or other, every possibly imaginable retail shop is listed by name, which seems redundant and we're going to miss most of them. And it would seem easier in a definition to say retail, which shall include but is not limited to, and then have a list of the types of retail businesses that this encapsulates.
As long as they're, you know, licensed or, you know, whatever disclaimer type thing to make sure that some of the more noxious uses that we may think about, we keep out.
Right, like I saw, I saw one distinction between like a high-end resale shop versus a nonprofit resale shop. I mean, that's a useful distinction and I think it would impact.
What, like goodwill?
Yeah, well, that's what I, that's what I seem to be talking about goodwill. So, yeah, it's, but I think I get it. I think we should try to find some umbrella definitions for some of these things.
And they could be more umbrella-type definitions that excludes certain specific things, you know.
Right.
Or they're defined, for example, a adult-use cannabis shop is technically a retail use.
retail use, but it's going to be called out specifically, so it won't fall under that broad umbrella of retail. And so we'd have some examples, some carve-outs like that, and we could have exclusions as well, but it might simplify things to have, where possible, some more general categories rather than five hundred sixty-three different uses.
Right, and every time we do call out, like, say, the cannabis facility, well, those are regulated, you know, especially by special uses, or any special use could be defined separately, let's say. And then any permitted use, it's all generic retail, we could just put them all together, um, as an idea. Or if they're prohibited, then excluding, and we just don't mention them in the definitions, and it's just excluded completely.
And if something's in the municipal code, does that mean it needs to stay called out separately?
I, I suggest that it is called out separately, because we don't want to prohibit something that we do license. For example, massage establishments, there was nothing in the definitions or the use table, but yet we provide licensing for them, and we allow them in, but we can't tell them where to go. So for those, yes, I think we need to have them in the definitions, and we need to have use tables that say where they need to be. Another way to look at it, if you want a takeaway, would be park-it analysis, okay? So basically, you pa, you preserve, what do you want to preserve and protect? What do you want to add to the community? As you're going through, you could do it this way, if you don't want to look at the table and just send it to me. Well, what do you want to remove from the community that's been kind of a problem, or, you know, in terms of parking, or any issues like that? And what do you want to keep out? That is not in the community, that you absolutely never want to see. So that's another way to just have those four categories, and start thinking through, and then I can take those, and I can start looking at this for you, as an option. So that concludes my presentation. You have any questions?
I don't believe.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Delaney?
Good.
Does any commissioner have anything they'd like to add before we, uh, call it a night?
I have, uh, printouts, if anybody has any.
Just send me electronically, I'll, I'll help you. I'll help you, Delaney, just send me electronically, okay? There are some things that, that I think are, are not in here, that need to be in here. Just like, for, for example, natural gas world, we're going to see above-ground storage tanks for natural gas, compressed natural gas, those kinds of things, things that, that aren't in front of us today, we're going to see soon, so.
And that reminds me of the, the bulk definitions will be forthcoming, I think we'll, we'll get through these, and then we'll tackle those, and some of these items will be covered in that, in that, uh, listing.
I had written down a, review of this, I had written down a whole bunch of things that you could add if you wanted to.
Absolutely, yep. All right. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Okay, before we adjourn, I just, uh, pointed out we had to cancel our, our Veterans Day ceremony here in Westmont, and other communities, uh, as well today, but we'd like to recognize our veterans, and for their honorable service to the country, and with that, I would-
That doesn't mean that we don't appreciate them, right? I said, Mr. Chair, that doesn't mean that we appreciate them any less.
Including our chairman.
Agreed.
Thanks for your service.
Absolutely, thank you all for your service.
Have a motion adjourned?
Motion adjourned.
Second. All in favor, raise the right hand. Meeting is adjourned.